At the class. They already got their papers signed off by somebody out there.
Okay, guys, ready? Dan. It's fun, okay. Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Tuesday, November 12, 2019 at 7:02 PM. Back to open session. We are reconvening from the closed session and there are no reportable action taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Denton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Here.
Mayor Santanes.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by myself and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Joel Huckman, Director of Public Safety. Please rise. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, the gift of community called the City of Bellflower. We thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. As we gather this evening, please give us the wisdom and the guidance and enlighten us so that we will decide what's best for the city. In addition, as we celebrate Veterans' Day this week, we recognize our veterans, members of our military, our first responders, our sheriff, our fire department. We thank them for their service. Please continue to guide them so that they can continue to protect us. We also remember those who are ill, those who are hungry, those who are homeless. Please give them the comfort and the healing that they so much deserve. We ask this always in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag and join me in saying, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joel. Let me start with announcements for this evening. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join the monthly morning mingle on Tuesday, November 26th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Network with local businesses and get to know each other while you enjoy a cup of coffee and fresh donuts. So, the Chamber of Commerce located on Bellflower Boulevard and Flower Street. So, please join us. Mayor Protem Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Bellflower Public Safety Department is seeking donations for our Christmas with a Cop event to benefit 15 underprivileged students. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's deputies and the Bellflower Public Safety staff will host a special holiday event, which includes a continental breakfast and Christmas present giveaway. Donations would be much appreciated and must be received by Friday, December 13. If you would like more information, please call Mr. Sacramento Ramos at area code 562-925-0124, extension 2530. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Garza. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, City Hall will be closed on November 28th and November 29th, and that's in celebration of the Thanksgiving holiday. These offices will reopen on Monday, December 2nd. No trash collection and street sweeping will occur on Thursday, November 28th. Trash collection will be delayed one day. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Ray Denton.
Thank you, Mayor. The holidays are fast approaching and Bellflower Volunteer Center is accepting donations of the new, for new unwrapped toys for Christmas. Donations will be much appreciated and needed to be received by December 2nd. For more information, please contact the Bellflower Volunteer Center at 562-804-1424, extension 2331. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dan. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you guys noticed, I always go number five and they always give me the weakest announcements, but tonight I got the best one. And that's about, mark your calendars because it's this year's Christmas tree lighting ceremony. We beheld Friday, December 6th at 6:30 at the Friendship Square located on Bellflower Boulevard and Belmont Street. Thirty-five hundred people come to this event. I mean, we're gonna have carolers, we're gonna have snow sledding, holiday crafts, and much, much more. This is a big deal. And I want to invite everybody to come because if you don't come, you're gonna say, "I should have been there." And depending on the weather, they'll have some snowflakes coming off the poles above there. It's just a great evening for the family and for everyone to enjoy downtown Bellflower. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. I also want to recognize the presence of Bellflower High School students. Please wave your hands. Wow, great attendance. Thank you so much. And thanks to your teacher, Ms. Nicolaidi. Thank you so much for coming. Tonight, we have one proclamation and presentation. It's in support of the 2019 Small Business Saturday, and the proclamation is gonna be presented to the representatives of Bellflower Chamber of Commerce. So, I'd like to invite my colleagues and the Chamber of Commerce representative to the riser. All right, today is a special day. We're celebrating the Small Business Saturday. As you recall, as you will look forward to and recall, Friday after Thanksgiving is called the Black Friday, and Monday after Thanksgiving is called Cyber Monday. And 10 years ago, a group of businesses started celebrating Small Business Saturday. That's a Saturday after Thanksgiving. So, since Thanksgiving falls on November 28th this year, so 29th is Black Friday, November 30th is Small Business Saturday. So, as Representative of Bellflower Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank them for all they do. As I made in my announcement, they do the Monday morning mingle. They also do the Business Beautiful, right? Did I call it right? And I know that the winner of Business Beautiful in October is Ray Emotive, right? If I recall correctly. There you go, see? Congratulations to Ray Emotive. So, they do a lot of things for the city. So, it's but fitting for them to be recognized, to receive this proclamation, celebrating Small Business Saturday. So, I'm not gonna read the whole thing because Dan's gonna complain, but I will just mention some highlights. This is very important to me. Fifty percent of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. So, that's significant. So, they make a lot of business. And so, I encourage our citizens and residents in Bellflower to please patronize, buy something from our small business in the city. We have a lot of small businesses here, so they can really use your help. So, the City of Bellflower supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. So, now therefore, I, Sani Ar-Santanes, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim November 30, 2019, a Small Business Saturday, and urge all residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Sign, Mayor Sani Ar-Santanes, Mayor Protem Juan Garza, Councilmember Ray Denton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, and Councilmember Dan Coops. So, I'd like to present this to the Presidente of Chamber of Commerce, Larry Wehage.
Larry?
Ladies and gentlemen, it's a great day to be a resident of the City of Bellflower. And for my fellow members of the chamber, I want to thank you for all your hard work that you've done over the years that have been president. It is my intention to remain president for another 10 years unless somebody undermines me somehow. And I want to thank the city because every time we ask for something, somehow, some way, we find a way to get it done with the help from the city. It's a great partnership. We love this city, and we will continue to do our best to help all of the businesses that want to make Bellflower their home. We thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we also have a presentation on the homeless shelter. Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you for the time on this. We've been working on this, as you know, pretty diligently for the past six weeks or so, and I'd like to start by saying that this is the steepest and largest learning curve I've ever experienced in my life, and it's all, it's happening quickly, and it's happening new, and I appreciate the residents of the council bearing with us as we learn how to go forward with this. But we are making progress, and tonight was the appropriate time to start explaining the actions that we're taking regarding the temporary shelter services that the city has been hearing of lately, and we are just out to lay the facts on the table as we see them today. Let me start by saying that, the two things first, for everybody that lives in the neighborhood, we'll be having a public meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at the proposed shelter site, and the address of that is 8831-8833 Cedar Street in Bellflower. And that's where we're proposing to place a temporary shelter. And through, I'm gonna go through some PowerPoint presentations tonight, and by the end of these slides, I think you'll see exactly how we got to the decision we got to on this. So, when people ask me, I talk to my friends in the business and colleagues and people in town and friends and residents in the city, you know, "Why are we doing this? How do we get started on this?" And it's an easy thing to not want to get started on because the problems seem very, very huge, and they seem like they're very difficult to get over, but the answers are for two reasons. One, it's the right thing to do, and as the mayor said in a previous comment, it's the compassionate thing to do. And that is true. But more importantly, and what's driven the staff and the city council, our residents want us to do it. So, last year about this time, almost exactly a year ago, we undertook a biannual survey, and we put seven or eight questions in the survey about homelessness. We'd been hearing some complaints anecdotally about homelessness, and we'd been seeing some things. We want to know what the residents felt about that. Do they feel strongly about this? Is this something we should do or not do? And the result was a little bit overwhelming. I was stunned when I first saw it and reported to the council, like, "These numbers are unbelievable." And the bottom line is, and you can see it in the last three bullet points there, is that 79% of our residents said public funds should be used to address the homeless issue in an active way. Then we came back with more than 70% again that the city should commit city funds to do it if necessary. And then, of course, we had an overwhelming number that believed that homelessness could be improved or solved. So, whether or not, at that point in time, frankly, the time clock started on what we were gonna do about homelessness and what we could do at that time also, we knew nothing about it. We had no idea how this was all gonna go or how it was gonna work. We'd seen some presentations from LASSA, which is, as you see up there, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, and we'd wondered how it was all gonna go. We weren't sure. So, the council and the staff went to school on this and started working pretty hard to figure out what the right thing to do. And first things first, we had a couple presentations, the most recent last January, from the Deputy Executive Director of LASSA about what they were doing. And we came away with the conclusion that LASSA was not interested in our problems, that they were regionally motivated, that they had got a countywide tax fund, and they were gonna use it for the things that they wanted to do, which were more long-term and more medium and long-range than what we needed to do. The problem we have in Bellflower is we have a number of homeless that are causing issues on the streets, and we wanted to figure out a way to address that. And there are a lot of legal hurdles in doing that on the front. The second thing we did, we wanted to find out exactly how many homeless we had in town, who they were, where they came from, where they existed, and so we hired CityNet to come in, and Kingdom Causes have been helping us. And CityNet came in and working with Kingdom Causes, had done some surveying and got to know a lot of the homeless people in town, and we had a pretty good idea, the number of homeless people that called Bellflower a home, that came from Bellflower, and could, you know, remain attached to Bellflower, that they had a reasonable link to it as opposed to just showing up one day from the Bay Area or something and not having any link to it at all. And then we started looking at different available options for providing the service. And that's where it really got strange. There is just a million different ways to approach this issue, and depending on how you look at it, you can end up providing services for very few people or a whole lot of people. And the, we had a count, we knew what we wanted to do, and what had happened is that Councilmember Garza and other members of the council had a relationship with Judge David Carter from Orange County, and he was the judge that found some notoriety in forcing the northern Orange County cities to provide homeless services. And so, the word back was that, you know, we needed to meet with him and find out what his methodology was and what he proposed, and whether or not that was something we wanted to look into. And when we met with Judge Carter, we were frankly overwhelmed at how clear his vision was and how reasonable his responses were. And we literally, we met with him in early September 2019. By the end of that month, we had completed an agreement with him, and the Orange County Catholic Worker, which is the advocate group suing on behalf of the homeless in Orange County, and we signed onto that lawsuit, that federal lawsuit. And the reasons for that are twofold mainly. One is that Judge Carter's formula allowed the city to come up with a reasonable amount of people that we'd have to provide services for. You know, the numbers would go as high as 200 in some scenarios, but under, given our count, that was done by CityNet and Kingdom Causes, and giving our knowledge of the local homeless that were in town here, and working with Judge Carter and his formula, the bottom line was that we could provide services for 50 people and meet the mandate for the services that we needed to provide. More importantly, that would allow us to enforce the city's anti-nuance and aggressive panhandling regulations that we currently have, that were previously barred by federal lawsuit, namely the Boise decision. If we provide those beds under the judge's formula, which is what we are proposing to do, then we can enforce the city's rules for the first time in a long time. And that's a freedom and a necessity that we believe our residents want us to do, and they want us to undertake. So, and that's what we intend to do. So, in short, the agreement that we signed with Judge Carter says that the city agrees to complete a plan for location construction of temporary shelter service by December 31st, 2019. We would like to think that we'd like to get the doors open by December 31st, 2019. That might be a long shot, but we're gonna try like heck to do it. The second thing is, as I mentioned before, we're gonna provide beds and services for 50 persons. Second, or last, persons receiving services in the shelter shall be Bellflower-based. They're not gonna come from Long Beach, Orange County, or anywhere else. They're gonna be Bellflower-based, that shows a distinct tie to Bellflower, and they will be afforded the services that the temporary shelter will provide. And that's something that we have hard data on, like I said before. And then, lastly, this is not going to be a shelter that's gonna be overrun by everybody wanting to get into it. Every person that enters the temporary service shelter, as we are proposing, shall be referred to the shelter by one of the referring entities that's approved by the city. That means Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, CityNet, and other qualified agencies that are approved by the City of Bellflower. This is not, I want to reiterate this, this is not gonna be a collection point for homeless people that just want to cause mischief. This is going to be a fully operated place with true security and true admission standards to get in. So, we are not gonna create a nuisance where people think that we might want to create a nuisance. We're not going to. In fact, the intent is just the opposite, and that's to get rid of the nuisances that are currently on the street that people are putting up with and have been putting up for the last four or five years. So, and the benefits, as been said many times, and I said, "We can enforce these benefits." I mean, a lot of times, people have said, "Well, there's no law against being homeless." That's true, there's not. But there are laws against people committing crimes on the street. And unfortunately, there's been a number of people committing crimes on the street who happen to be homeless that we really couldn't enforce that we're going to enforce once we open this shelter, and we think that's gonna be a tremendous benefit to the community. So, that, I think, is the biggest reason that we want to do this, the biggest benefit that the community's going to receive. Secondly, and not at least important on this, according to the judge, and I'll almost verbatim on what he said to us, when we open this shelter and there is somebody that is breaking law in Bellflower and they appear to be homeless, they all have the option of going to the shelter, leaving Bellflower, or going to jail, and that is an option we don't have now. And we believe that we can frankly clean up the streets, and I think that's the biggest benefit that we can provide. So, the next question is, where are we gonna put the shelter? And I've already divulged the address, so everybody knows that shelter, but I want everybody in this room to know, and everybody watching, that this is something we took very, very seriously. And we looked at several different locations. First up is the site that the city currently owns, and we thought this was gonna be the site early on. We were gonna put the site on the vacant land on the other side of the Riverview Park, at the old nursery site that's there. What's the name of the nursery?
Andy's.
Andy's Nursery. The old Andy's Nursery site. And this, this is where we thought was the best place to go, and I think that was the direction we were going until we found out that, one, it was gonna take a tremendous amount of legwork just to get egress and ingress into there, and, two, the notion of providing for potable water and sewage and electricity and getting on that site made it a very long project and a very expensive project, and there's no way we could meet the judge's expected deadline of even getting a plan in place by December 31st. So, we had to move on from that site. I do believe, however, that long-term, this may be the site, but that's a bridge we'll cross at another time, I believe. We looked at other sites, and let me add to this, the complication of looking at sites is we need a decent amount of open space to do this, and there's not a lot of enclosed open space in Bellflower, and the Economic Development Director likes to tell me there's less than a 1% vacancy rate on the available space that we have now. So, we looked at several of those spaces, and this site at 9072 Rosecrans Boulevard was too small and frankly too expensive. So, we passed on that. It just wouldn't have been tenable to do. 9065 Rosecrans, way too small and very expensive, so we passed on that. We couldn't have instituted the project there. Now, these are the, these are all of the available spaces that we could find at the time, given the short timeframe that we had working with the judge to set up a shelter. Next one up, 10145 Alondra. This one is a little bit small, but frankly, it's for sale only, and for $2.5 million, I think I could pass. That was just, it'd be too expensive, it never made sense, and as expensive as this thing's going to be, it would have been much more expensive for me to try to do this one. So, we passed on that. Then we go back to Artigia Boulevard. Same thing applies there. The space is right, it's an excellent lot, the enclosed space is fantastic, but for $5.6 million, it wasn't something that was economically viable for us. If we had unlimited funds and unlimited amount of time to convert a facility, this space would have been fantastic as well, but it wasn't gonna work for what we wanted to do. So, we end up here, the sixth spot, and we know that it may not be a perfect space, but it's not a bad one. It is fairly isolated, the price is right, it's huge, we won't use all of it, and we'll have some space to do everything we need to do. We could do it inside. And I believe that there will be very little impact on the neighborhood when we do this because everything we will need to do will be inside the building. So, we're working with Mercy House now, who runs shelters in Anaheim and Santa Ana, and they're recognized as, if not the best, they're certainly one of the best in doing this sort of work. And what we're planning to do is create a circumstance where they perform the work soup to nuts, and they will provide a fully secure space, which I need to remind you is people that are referred into there by Bellflower entities. And there'll be 24-hour security, activities will be programmed. It won't be a luxurious site by any means because that's not the game plan here. We're thinking more MASH unit than hotel, so that's not what we want to do. But we believe it'll be a fairly quiet activity. It's buffered by the SCE power lines on one, and we understand there's a number of residences immediately to the west, but it is also buffered by a 12-foot alley between the two buildings there with a tall wall, and we think that the noise will be a minimum there. And again, we will, we are going to do a walk-through tomorrow night, and we're gonna have a public meeting, and we'll explain everything, what we're doing in more detail tomorrow night if anybody, and I would hope everybody would want to attend that. So, that's kind of where we're at today on the decision. So, the council, in order to expedite this thing so we can actually get a plan to the judge done by the end of this year, the council gave me significant authority to quickly implement this program. And to date, I've completed the lease at the site at 8831, and I have purchased $11,000 worth of key rail to help us designate the needed parking areas where we're going to do that. We are very close. We have a proposal, which is about 90% done from Mercy House. We still need to do some negotiation with them to do that, and we're moving closer to an agreement with Habitat for Humanity to do the interior construction of the site. So, we're very close to a complete plan, and we're fairly close to a complete project on this. And we, it needs to say that this is an expensive project. We estimated the first-year cost of implementing this program, of building the site and implementing it, about $3 million. The good news is that the County of Los Angeles last week, the Board of Supervisors, as you may have read, has given the city $1.5 million to get started, and we believe there's more money available through the state and other entities, so we're gonna continue to go after that. The good news also is, we're on the tip of the spear on this thing. So, we think we'll be one of the first in at the state level and in the area to get those funds as we go in because we have, we will have a fully implemented plan and a working structure very soon. And other than that, the only thing I wanted to show people was, I understand there's gonna be people that are critical of having a shelter, specifically if it's in their neighborhood. There's no place we could locate a shelter without somebody being upset. I get that, I'm going in. I'd feel the same way if I lived there, but what I want people to do is to judge us in a year's time. We believe we are gonna put up a professional operation, that there will be no impact. We believe that the impacts will be positive because we're not gonna see scenes like this one on the street, that we, they will be transported in and out to and from appointments, and they're not gonna be lingering around street corners, liquor stores, town squares, freeway entrances, and wherever else that we currently see people that are desperate in need of services. So, the only thing I would request, I understand that a lot of people will support this, I understand a lot of people may be objecting to it. The folks that are gonna be critical of it in the short run, give us a chance. I think we're gonna do a good job, and I believe we will do a turnkey, and I believe we'll do it seamlessly, and I believe our facility will be a credit to the city and the neighborhood. So, instead of seeing scenes like this, I think that we'll see scenes more like what is currently going on in Santa Ana, in Anaheim. Clean, clean buildings on the exterior, clean interiors, and this is exactly the kind of, the thing we're looking for, the kind of vibe we're looking for there. Maybe not so much artwork, it's a matter of choice, but we think, we think that the view and the mood there is kind of what we're looking at. And bathroom and shower facilities, to help people clean up and give them a chance, give them a chance to lead a more normal and a better life and be compassionate about it. Nothing fancy, but it will meet the need. And that's kind of it. So, again, I advertised the meeting. We're gonna talk about this in more detail onsite at 8831-8833 Cedar Street, but it's the same building, two different addresses, tomorrow at 6:30. And we're gonna be there, and two members of our council are gonna be there, and we're happy to answer any questions for us. we're happy to answer any questions for as long as you want to sit and ask them. And there may be some questions tonight, if the council has any for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. First of all, I want to thank you and the rest of the staff for working on this issue. I know it's been a long journey, but I think we're coming to a good resolution of this issue. I just want to kind of piggyback on a couple of your comments that you made. In the case of Martin versus Boise, the judge ruled that homelessness is not a crime. And so, it basically says that we cannot enforce our rules and regulations, ordinances, unless we have, as Mr. Stewart mentioned, unless we have a shelter where the homeless population have an option to go to. So the key point here is, we're giving them an option, as Mr. Stewart emphasized, their option to go to the shelter, go to the next city, or be arrested. That's the key. So, once we have the shelter, then we can enforce our regulations. And I was watching the trend, when the news broke that LA County granted us $1.5 million, I was watching the trend in social media, and one gentleman posted something that he's going to send the homeless from Long Beach to Bellflower. And that's not going to be the case. There's no dumping of homeless into Bellflower. So, Mr. Stewart assured you that, and we give you assurance from the city council that there will be no dumping, because we already know who they are, for the most part. And the other comment also that I was following was, there'll be more homeless in the city worried about the crime. Let me just assure you that, I worked in a skid row for five years, so I've seen homelessness run right in my front eyes. Let me share you that, if you haven't noticed, the homeless people are here already in Bellflower. They are here. They're on the sidewalks, they're on the parks. And so, my question is, a hypothetical question, would you rather see them on the sidewalk, on the parks, or in the shelter? I think that's a key question that we need to look into. As Mr. Stewart again mentioned, it's the nimbyism that prevents solutions to be implemented that's not in my backyard. Unfortunately, it's going to be in somebody's backyard, okay? And the staff of the seat of Bellflower took a lot of time, a lot of effort, to identify several properties, and they vetted all these properties, and they came up with a solution. And I bet you that any of this solution, any of the sites that they looked into, that they will propose to the city tonight, somebody would object, because it is in their backyard. So I think we need to look at the bigger picture. Again, my question that we need to look into is, do you want to see them on the sidewalk? Do you want to see them in the parks? Or do you want to see them in a shelter with 24/7 security? So I'd like to ask Mr. Stewart, what was the security measure to make sure that the, I will call them clients, the clients are not roaming the street, they're not out there on the, because the location, it's very close to the intersection of Cedar and Lakewood. And one of the questions from, I'm anticipating one of the questions from the neighborsies, will they be roaming around the neighborhood?
No. So, if they go to the shelter, they will be going voluntarily, and there will be wraparound services provided by other agencies of the county onsite at the shelter, as quickly as laws, and the others can organize those. So they're not going to be there against their will, they will be there at their choosing, because it'll be a safe, secure site. If they have appointments, if they have appointments with a doctor, or a counselor, or another service provider, the contract agent at Mercy House will provide that transportation for them, so they won't be wandering over to the bus site and waiting for a bus, and taking a bus wherever they need to go. We will provide that transportation for them. And that's a service we're going to commit to for at least the first year, as we get this thing up and running. Secondly, as I indicated before, they'll be referred in, and I'm guessing, I don't know, but I'm guessing there'll be a good number of them referred in through the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and if somebody decides they want to leave, they will have to deal with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department on their departure, because we will call them. So they're not going to wander freely on the street.
All right, thank you. You mentioned earlier about one of the options is, and this nursery, and one of the difficulties with that is lack of sewer. So does this site have all the utilities that we need to run a shelter?
Yes. Except for the build-out, we still have to build out the internal cubicles and beds. We have to do the shower, however we're going to, build the showers, and the air conditioning and the ventilation required there. We're still working that out, doing engineering on that, but it has everything that we need onsite to make it all work.
I'm assuming that there's going to be a physical separation between men, women, and possibly families?
Yes.
So what kind of separation are you envisioning?
There'll be separate dormitories for men and women, and there'll be four or five beds for family units, I believe, intact there. Couples.
Couples, okay, all right. Okay, very good, thank you. Any question of Mr. Stewart?
I don't have questions, just comments.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor Protem Garza.
So I want to first start off by thanking our staff for putting this presentation together. Again, I understand that considering the fast pace of this effort, and seeing the vast amount of news that's come out on the facility, and then not knowing the intricacies of the program and how it's going to look, you know, I really commend staff for putting this out there for our community to dispel any misperceptions that are out there in terms of the location, the way the shelter looks, and the operation itself. So again, thank you, staff, for presenting tonight. Just to reiterate some of the things that were said before, I just want to remind our community that these homeless people are in our community already. They're throughout our community, right? And I think for us, as people, is, do we continue to accept the fact from a moral perspective that we're okay with people sleeping on the streets? Or do we provide a facility for them to be able to access help that I think everyone in the room knows that they need, right? And I think that's a step that we're taking. It's not going to be, what was said before, we're not going to appease everybody, but I think this council, in unanimous fashion, has indicated that this is what we need to do. We need to take a step. We're not doing this to be the first in the county, we're doing it because that's the mandate that you, as residents, have impressed upon us as you're elected, and this is what we think is the right thing to do. We feel that the current programs that are being offered to address homelessness that you, and I, and us are paying for, through our sales taxes, the current programs for homelessness are not functioning. And if they are functioning, they're not functioning fast enough. And so, we as cities, including Bellflower, are starting to be more innovative in terms of trying to address this problem, because, again, the current programs are not functioning. And so, we know that other cities are looking at us in terms of what we're doing, I know that our city staff continues to get calls from other cities in terms of what we're doing and why and how. I'm getting that as well, and I'm sure my colleagues are as well. Again, we're not doing it for the attention, there's absolutely a sense of nimbyism out there, that people don't want to do this, and I think that's why there's a lot of eyes in Bellflower in terms of what are we doing and how is it going to work? We are, as Jeff said, we're the tip of the spear, we understand it, and we're confident that this is the program that's going to work. We want to connect our homeless with help, right? We have the winter season coming up, the rain's coming up, if we're going to do this, it's now, and we need to do it fast, because we need to get them off the street, and we need to get them with help. We think that this is going to avert a health crisis, because every time that somebody defecates or urinates out in public or spits, and the vast amount that are homeless, unfortunately, because they don't have somewhere else to go, and they're doing, that is literally a recipe for disaster in terms of a health crisis that I'm sure you don't want and we don't want. This also creates a space, a safe space for our homeless, right? I just saw a news story this morning in the news on how there's an increasing amount of homeless that are getting beat up, and actually, some are getting killed, which is wrong. So this will create a safe space for them. It'll allow us to, again, enforce our laws. Right now, we're not allowed to enforce our laws. This will allow us to enforce our laws, which is that quality of life that the residents have told us they want. They want to be able to enjoy their parks, you want to be able to enjoy your quality of life, your public space, without being harassed, and we think this is an appropriate win-win. We think this supports our businesses, right? We were just a finalist for being a business-friendly city. We're not doing it for awards, but we think this absolutely supports our business community to be able to have an opportunity to have business in our city, and to create that community that our businesses deserve and that we deserve as well. We feel that the program that we've developed has enough control measures. You've trusted us before, in terms of how we put limitations on certain businesses and activities that have a potential for failure, and we think that this has enough control measures so that, again, we help people, and at the same time, it's fair for everyone. So you've trusted us before, we ask for your trust in this again. You should know that, to be in this facility, somebody that goes into the facility has to qualify to get in. So that prevents the dumping that we talked about of other cities bringing their homeless to us. You have to qualify against facility, you can't just walk up and knock on the door and get access to it. That's not allowed. And in fact, if you're knocking on the door and you're not supposed to be in this city, you will get arrested. So that, again, that's a control measure that we have in order to ensure that this serves our Bellflower residents and our Bellflower neighbors. Anybody that's in this facility will have to follow the rules. And they'll have to exhibit good behavior, and they'll have to exhibit progress, because at the end of the day, that's what you're paying for. And, again, we think it's a win-win. If you want help, you will get help in this facility. And if you don't want help, then you're not going to be welcome in Bellflower. And that's a reality, unfortunately. So I really want to thank, again, my colleagues for the courage to support this unanimously. It really, really takes a lot. I want to thank our staff for all their hard work for this program, it's not easy, but they're doing a fantastic job for you all. I also want to thank our city attorney for the negotiation that he performed for this agreement. Again, without him, this doesn't happen, and we have a fantastic city attorney. I want to thank Janice Hahn, Supervisor Hahn, for her support. Without her, we wouldn't have the seed money to get this facility up and running. I want to thank Judge Carter as well for his support in crafting this negotiation, as well as the plaintiffs themselves. They were, from what I hear, they were really reasonable and logical in terms of coming up with the win-win for everyone around. And I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for the support of this. We know that homelessness is a fluid effort, we're all learning, the state's learning, the county board is learning, we're learning. But again, we feel that the model that we have will be successful, and it's a model that other cities will follow as well, and hopefully, in a very short amount of time, hopefully, it will address this issue. So again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate the opportunity, and go Bellflower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Garza. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, again, echo, again, some of the comments made by the mayor and the Mayor Protem, but this is the compassionate way to go. And, you know, I've lived in Bellflower all my life, and the dynamics of homelessness has really changed. As a kid, I don't remember really, I would see somebody that you would wonder, but you'd never, you know, and you'd make me think, you know, what's happening, and so on, but to see it today, it's totally different. They're, you know, they're out there in all places, and it's a tougher time, and I'm just, again, so thankful that this council made the bold move. Again, just want to reiterate thanking staff for keeping the drive forward, step by step, but it's happening. I want to, you know, thank the beginnings of Kingdom Causes, I'm on the Board of Directors there, and I know the seeds were planted many years ago, and now it's coming to fruition there, there's more support for it. And, you know, Bellflower's a great town, and, you know, there's a lot of great things happening, and this is one of the great things that's happening, is that we're going to serve our, you know, homeless neighbors, and to be ready to support such a program, and continue to, you know, refine it, improve it, whatever it may be. I know this great town will eventually get behind it, and I just want to thank the community, its residents, yes, we, you know, we're all not going to agree on everything, but I think at the end of the day, it's going to, again, you know, again, serve your fellow, again, human beings, and so, things are happening, just get educated on this, come tomorrow night, learn the situation, actually see it, and just get a better understanding of, you know, how it's going to really operate. So, again, I want to thank everybody, again, thank the council, again, staff, and we're going to keep, again, driving forward. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Costumer Hamada, Costumer Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. I've always been one to always go by an 80/20 kind of rule, whatever, it's like, 80% of the people causes 20% of the problems or whatever. We've been throwing money at homeless ever since I've been on this dais, and with that money, we've been doing a good job, and only, I guess, 20% of the people really want help, everybody that's out there. Now we have something that we can do, something with the other 80% that's out there, and get them off the sidewalks, and see what you see going to work. Every day, people go to work, they work out of town, drive away from their home, see these campers on the sidewalks and the public places, get to work, and then they get off work, come home, they see it again, and it goes on and on and on. And now we have the tools, finally, to do something about it. And I really believe this can turn around our problem that we have in town, because who knows, if we don't do something now, we could have a lot of bigger problem like the other cities do. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Costumer Dunn, Costumer Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a question of Mr. Stewart. So on our build-out, are we going to try to use local contractors and suppliers to be able to provide that?
Yes, we are. We are talking to Habitat for Humanity, who has a regional headquarters here, area headquarters, how they say it, in Bellflower, and we're going to try to use the supplies that they have hand on their restore, and we'll use local suppliers as much as we can possibly do that.
That's another boost, you know, to know that it's local money staying in our local constituency. When we went to visit the judge on that Monday morning back in September, I don't know how many of you have ever been in a federal court judge's chambers, I mean, it's pretty impressive. This is a plain-talking judge, who invited Bellflower to say to them, to us, would you be the first city in LA County with me standing behind you to try to implement a new program? And I quoted when he said, "If we don't do something, we're going to lose all of our cities to the homelessness." Remember when he said that, guys? And we pictured in our mind's eye, Los Angeles and San Francisco, where you cannot even walk down the streets because the homeless are so prevalent. And we wondered whether or not he really meant what he said. He said, "I'll tell you what, if you engage a homeless person, and you're not getting the satisfaction you need out of law enforcement, here's my cell phone. I don't care if it's 4 o'clock in the morning, I will come to Bellflower, and I will invoke my power to take care of this." This is how serious he was. Well, that got us out of tension. So we went into open chambers, an open session, and we signed the agreement, and Fullerton was standing there with us, and several other cities that were going to come after us to do the same kind of, but we are the first in Los Angeles County to have this kind of activity behind us. Now, you heard what the city manager said, when we engage someone on the sidewalk, once the homeless, the shelter is, in fact, up and running, three questions are going to be asked. First question is, are you interested in our service that we can offer at the homeless situation? And the answer is, most of the folks that are on the sidewalks, they like it on the sidewalk. There's no one to really concern themselves, they go to bed when they want, they wake up when they want, they panhandle when they, you know, their freedom is right there. So they probably will be reluctant to have the enforcement of wanting to go to this shelter. All right, you don't want to go to the shelter, you don't want any help, fine. Second question is, if you don't take our advice and go to the shelter, we have the authority to take you to jail, to arrest you. Well, that kind of hits home. Now, we found out now that the city is going to be charged five, every time we go in for a booking, that's $500 on our account. Now, we found out now that the city is going to be charged five, every time we go in for a booking, that's five hundred dollars on our account to book a homeless person. And that's our responsibility because we're going to be able to have that possibility. And if they say no, said, well, then you need to move on. All right, so what have we done now? They're going to go to Lakewood, they're going to go to Downey, they're going to Long Beach, that hasn't solved the problem, that's just giving a problem to another city. Now, what the hope is, is that the judge tells us, you guys are the guinea pigs. And if you're successful with this, Lakewood and Downey and Long Beach and everybody else in the area is going to say, hey, we want to participate as well. So when we look at the homeless shelter, we've asked the staff, and I think the term was, we're not building the Taj Mahal. We're building a functional, efficient, homeless, clean place, habitat. That is going to be there, I think we signed it, we're signed up for an eight-year lease, four-year lease. And uh what happens at that point in time, we'll see. We've got funding coming in from LA County to help us get started. We have the potential of state and federal funding coming after that, but we're the first in line. We're the ones that are initiating these kinds of activities. So we, we're going to give it our best shot. Uh we have a compassionate uh council here that feels the same about the situation. There was not one negative vote or anything ever said about, we cannot do this, we need to go forward. We have been told that if we can get our homeless situation figured out, that are actually our calls for service for the uh Los Angeles Sheriff's Department will be decreasing. Cause you wouldn't believe how many times people call in because of homeless situations. So know that we expect potentially crime to go down in Bellflower because we're going to be able to address the problem. Now, some people might give testimony tonight if the mayor opens this up, you know, everybody has rights, yes, you do. And we're going to try to our best to to observe those rights and give you every opportunity to get help. And I guess beyond that, we want to make sure that the city of Bellflower has asked us on the surveys. This is what concerns us, we like your parks, we like your streets, we like your downtown, but what bothers you? The homeless, do something about the homeless. So we're hearing what the constituents have asked and we're going to do our very best to make it appropriately decisions and hopefully you'll support us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. This item, this presentation i- is so important to us and that's why we want to hear from you. Usually we don't take questions during presentations, but uh this is a very important issue, so we want to hear from you. Uh ask your concerns, if you have any questions, our staff will be willing and ready to answer your questions, so.
Or tomorrow night.
Or tomorrow night, but if you have some burning question tonight, ask them now. Otherwise, bring them, bring the questions tomorrow.
Good evening, council. One of the questions that I've never heard around is possible rehabilitation of some of the members of the homeless community. There's a lot of them guys that are pretty doggone healthy. And I think because of their mental condition or being on drugs, perhaps that there should be some kind of work program to make them feel better about doing something for themselves and their futures by making them do some kind of menial occupation within the community, whatever, to rehabilitate them into becoming better people and maybe having a better future for themselves and their cohorts. And maybe that has to be taken into consideration because many of the people on drugs are homeless or are on drugs and have mental conditions which need to be addressed also to make them better people, you got to solve the problems. So maybe some small way, the fellow members among each other homeless can kind of induce their own membership to maybe clean up the street or lawn or parking lot or something to try to rehabilitate them to that a mode of working for themselves and maybe getting back into the good life mode. Rather than becoming a bum on the street, sitting there like nothing to do and and the world owes them a living. Because the United States does not owe them a living just because they were born here. They were born here with some responsibility, they were taught right in school that they have to do for themselves to become a better person and take care of themselves, that's the way the nation survives internally and externally. And I think somehow maybe that issue, I never seen it addressed anywhere, anyplace. And it maybe needs to be at the top of the program, I know it's tough to deal with the homeless problem, very tough. It's it's one of the toughest jobs you guys have and many cities have around. So it's no easy task, but should warrant consideration somehow to try to make some of these people have a better life anyhow that they don't stay homeless. Because when you're given a free gift of shelter with no duties, you become a bum. And nobody likes a bum. I don't care, I I know that you feel for the homeless and that's that's okay. Everybody has compassion for them. But still, I'm thinking about trying to rehabilitate them to make themselves better people and enjoy their better future for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh in in response to your question, uh one, the primary goal of the uh the case managers in the shelter will will for them is to find them long-term housing right away. So that's going to be a component of the service that will be provided to the homeless. Oh, I forgot to say, uh if you can just sign in before you speak and state your name for the record.
So as Joe's finished, I'll sign in. Thanks Victor, you gonna go after me? You want to stand here with me? All right, good, good, stay right here, I need backup. Uh good evening, council. I wanted to piggyback on a this social media message that you read regarding other cities dumping on Bellflower. I anticipate that happening. And if we don't nip that in the bud very quickly, I would suspect it might spread. If Long Beach or Lakewood or Downey or Paramount or Norwalk decides that, hey, we can solve our problem very quickly, we tell them that Bellflower has services, they've got shelter and they send them our way. If we tried to arrest our way out of that situation, we're going to be tasked with a tremendous debt by sending them to county jail. Is there a plan? Something in place to resolve that very, very quickly if it comes about?
There is a plan, uh Mr. Stewart.
We're working on that plan.
One of suggestions that uh the judge, the judge, the judge gave us a suggestion to address that issue.
You have the mic, have at it. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney? You want to help here? Uh one of the solution, one of the solutions that the judge mentioned to us is for the city to send a letter to the neighboring cities, basically telling them, you cannot send your homeless to us. Okay, can you elaborate then, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I I think to really answer the question require, is not so much a legal question at the moment. But as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the the judge gave specific direction to make this a very public announcement, a very public presentation about what the settlement agreement actually does, what the city's legal requirements are with, under the settlement agreement and to inform all the neighboring cities that this this temporary shelter is not intended to accept homeless individuals from all of our surrounding neighborhoods, nor is it intended to house those individuals that already are within Bellflower but stem from other locations and happen to be trans- transiting through the city. Rather, this the shelter is intended to be provided as a really a plan B to other options and only to those individuals who have a tie-in with Bellflower, so they're either persons that resided here with a a proper facility and and when I say proper facility, I mean, like, most of us in this room are are experiencing with four walls on a roof um and have through whatever reason ended up on the streets. But formerly resided here in Bellflower, have grown up in Bellflower and can demonstrate that, for example, they went through the school system or they have family here in Bellflower. They have to have some connection to the city of Bellflower in order for the city to be legally obli- obligated to take care of those individuals. Otherwise, as as the court has pointed out to both publicly during his his discussions in chambers when the settlement agreement was signed, but also i- in discussions in chambers, he has no expectation that that the citizens of Bellflower should be taking care of people from Long Beach or Norwalk or from any other city in in the local neighborhood or anywhere else. He expects us fully to move those folks along into si- the system that already exists for homeless individuals or to move them along to where they originated from, so whether that's one of our surrounding neighborhoods or not.
And if I could piggyback on that, we know who they are. We know where they come from. The SAOs and the Bellflower deputies know exactly who these people are, where they came from, where they grew up, they know by name. So it's going to be very difficult for an outsider to try to make the case, they came from Bellflower and they're just going to be asked to leave and go back to whence they came, or they'll be transported back.
And I think the city manager, the mayor and 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 other council members have pointed out that this is a developing pro- process, so I will have to make a report back to the court and to the plaintiffs in this action about exactly where we are. The settlement agreement requires us to have a plan in place by December thirty first. Plan in place does not mean that the shelter is complete or that it's operational, it means that we have a plan to get there and we're demonstrating that we're meeting that December thirty first deadline in good faith and we're making substantial progress toward implementing it. And so this is one of those updates and as I think you're aware and other folks in the audience are aware, the council previously adopted a resolution declaring an emergency in order for us to bypass a lot of the red tape that ordinarily would be in place. And from a legal perspective, it's entirely appropriate that we do so, we have a court order in place and we need to implement it. It's also, as as the city manager has mentioned and the mayor mentioned, has allowed the city council to adopt new new anti-nuance regulations in response to anti or limiting camping in public places, obstructing sidewalks, all the types of things that folks in in this city identified as being of concern with regard to the homeless and we haven't been able to frankly enforce because of the Ninth Circuit Court decision in in out of Idaho, which is the Supreme Court may or may not take up as as for consideration. That's a very long-winded explanation and I apologize for that, but it's a complicated process and and perhaps that gives you some insight.
It clarified some issues, thank you very much.
All right. Before we get into the next question, I just wanted to clarify again that the people that will be helping this facility are people you know. They are your neighbors, they are people you grew up with. So when somebody gets approached, first of all, you should know that when people get approached, the first point of contact that we have legal obligations actually, that the first person, that the first person to approach a home, a person who's homeless is not going to be a law enforcement official. It's going to be actually a service provider. That's compassionate, right? And so when that person does a screening, part of the screening is going to be to ensure that that person can qualify to get into the facility. So you don't get an automatic in. So those measures, these are the control measures I talked about before, this will prevent other cities from dumping in our city. We expect frankly that it's going to get tested. That's reality. But once we find out what other cities are doing and if they're testing us, believe me, we will take appropriate measures to prevent that. Let me repeat that, we will take appropriate measures to prevent that.
And you have a federal judge that will have a very specific interest in looking at it.
Absolutely. So we have federal backing, federal judges backing, we will not tolerate that. That's an assurance to our public, this, that's why we're doing this. It's not that we don't want to help people. We want, we would love to help everybody like you would. Unfortunately, we don't have the resources, so we're going to help our own. Again, we're helping your neighbors. So I hope that makes it clear that these are the measures to prevent people from dumping on us.
Uh one other point I'd like to make, being a member of a couple of service organizations in the city, don't leave them out. Uh Lions specialize in eyewear, uh vision, uh vision surgery. So uh and Kwanis certainly is a is involved in a number of things, uh and Rotary is too, so don't forget us. Uh we're here to help and uh if they need eyeglasses or anything, certainly refer them to the Lions, we'll take care of them.
That's the beauty is is that, one of the things that I think we didn't intend as a council, as a byproduct of this, of a nice uh development has been the amount of sentiment from the community that we've gotten. I've gotten it when I'm on the street and people, people tend to ask me, is it Bellflower only? And when I say yes, the next thing I usually get is when you open this facility up, I want to go in and I want to help. I want to go feed, I want to go donate clothes. I've gone barber shops from our town saying I will go in there and cut their hair, so when they go for job interviews, they they look better. And that sentiment is Bellflower. That's Bellflower, that's us taking care of our own and that's beautiful. So thank you for the offer, we will absolutely take you up on that offer. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh but, Mr. Wait, before you go into the next question, I was talking with one of the business owners in Bellflower. And so I I told him that um we need to feed the homeless population. Three meals a day, seven days a week. So I told him that um wouldn't it be nice if the churches, service clubs would kind of pitch in uh to feed them at least on the weekend. And he offered right away, he's going to take one day on a weekend. And he's going to find another partner to feed another for another day on a weekend. So can you imagine uh we have two business owners in Bellflower feeding the homeless on weekends? So that will save us a lot of costs, at least for two days in a week, maybe we can get more. So uh we're trying to make this a community activity.
Do they, do they need a taste tester?
I already signed up, sorry, you're too late.
You got beaten to the punch.
Come on, Victor.
All right. Uh did you sign in, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Time's up, Victor, thanks for coming in.
That's what I get for standing with Larry over here. Uh well, uh first off, good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff and fellow Bellflorians here tonight and online. First off, I'd like to thank you for listening to the concerns of the community uh in regard, in regards to homelessness and taking action. It is not a matter that one can take lightly, as we know. I personally believe that part of the dilemma stems from our society at large wanting to help, but not wanting to have a solution in their own backyard. Some of you mentioned that tonight. Unfortunately, it has reached the backyards of Bellflower and it is spread out throughout our city. Uh taking a step in the uh to contain it is the right direction. We just have to make sure that it limits the impact on the on those that are surrounded by the shelter or that surround the shelter. Uh most of my answers or questions were answered this evening. I had about seven here and you guys did a very good job of answering them. One of the questions I have was um uh in regards to the site, I I did some research quickly when you guys mentioned that it's going to be Mercy House, that's going to be the operator. I looked at their website, looked at their sites, I mean, they are, they are state of the art, it's not just from what I saw here too, but just from going on Google and checking them out. They they, you can't tell that they're a shelter, so I'm really excited to see that, so with that, my question would be, are there any plans to improve the exterior of the location that you are um planning on on building the shelter on to kind of make it a little bit more um of a of a
More appealing?
And appealing for the the neighborhood?
Okay, Mr. Stewart?
Not specifically, but it's a heck of an idea, it sounds like a terrific volunteer effort, so.
There you go, Lions and Rotary.
I can, I can, I can see Kwanis here, I can see Lions here, okay.
That's true. Rotary too, so. Um and then the second one, I, it was more of a suggestion, um I would encourage you guys to put together or whether it's you or Mercy House, to have a hotline for the residents that's around that shelter so that they can call in any concerns, anything that they see, anything that that could uh, you know, give them peace of mind.
We think, we think they do that and uh they're going to be there tomorrow night, so we can ask them directly, yeah.
Perfect, other than that, like I said, you guys answered all, most of all the questions that I had, so thank you. Uh and I think you guys are taking the right step and helping our city grow together, so keep it up, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Victor, before you go, I really believe, and you know, we've had discussions about Constitution Park and the concerns we've had there and we're taking steps to make it better. And this shelter is not far from that, across the street.
Right.
I think we're going to see more patrol activity so that it'll be a safer environment in that part of town than it's ever been before. Because we need to be proactive on making sure that the constituents are safe. Because we need to be proactive on making sure that constituents are safer. I mean, if there's something introduced in their neighborhood that they feel a little queasy about, we're gonna make sure that there are enforcements there that make them feel better about the place, not less. I think there's gonna be an advantage to living over there rather than a disadvantage.
So Mr. Coops, Randy here was just reading, we just literally got Mercy House's proposal in this afternoon and part of their security plan is a half mile sweep around the radius of property several times a day. So I dare say we'll eliminate the issues at Constitution Park with this.
Right, but that had been a past, before we got into the homeless business, that was a concern. And I think that with the work we're gonna do on Constitution Park and the work we're gonna do on this homeless shelter, that section of Bellflower will actually be safer.
Okay. Actually, Councilmember Coops, actually I did do an aerial check of the site once we got the address out and out. There's a property to the east where the towers are.
The Addison?
Is that, is that right away? Maybe I, I mean, if, if we could put pressure on them to do some rehab in their property as well.
We're working on it.
All right.
We're on it.
All right, thank you. Next. If you can just please sign in.
Okay. Okay. My name is Diana Hernandez. I'm a senior in Bellflower High School in government, in Ms. Nicolares' class. I'm also.
Please come closer to the microphone. There you go.
Pull it down. Pull it closer. There you go.
You're being recorded.
Oh, okay.
You're on, you're on TV too, so don't worry.
I ran for cross-country since ninth grade. I'm chilling this year, but the past three years we practice and we train really hard and the courses we take is all along Bellflower. And one of our most common routes is the riverbed, which happens to be the most concerned and watched over course for us because there's a lot of homeless there. And this year during the summer practice, there have been multiple complaints about the homeless actually making themselves more aware to the runners where they actually, you know.
Intimidate?
Yeah, they, they came close to us and they're by the Crowthers Park, there's, there's a bunch of homeless there and you would have like their wheelchairs and their utilities or their tents and all that there. And we're, we're trying to practice or we're just trying to hang out, but we had to keep our watch and it's kind of dangerous. And there have been multiple times where we had to like change our route of direction due to criminal activities by the homeless. So that's one of our concerns as a student because I care about my friends. I wouldn't want anything to happen to them. And then for the, the shelter, the shelters, I'm just concerned about like how long can these homeless actually stay? Cause like what happens if it overcrowds? Cause I know like there's like a lot of, I know from experience that there's a lot of homeless on the riverbed. Like I would, like on a daily run, I would probably see like, I would probably catch like three or four on the riverbed. And then walking home, there could be like random others or just going to the store. I would see a lot others by the Smart and Final. There you go. And so if it overclouds, what will happen?
Say it again.
If the shelter is overcrowded, what will happen?
Oh, let me ask, let me answer the question, the first question first. So you're concerned about your safety, Crowthers Park, Riverview Park, Smart and Final. So would you agree that once we have the shelter, because right now we cannot enforce our regulations, our laws and regulations because again homelessness is a crime, so we cannot enforce, our hands are tied at this point. Because as I mentioned earlier, our homeless population, they don't have an option. They're homeless, okay? But once, once the shelter is up and running, they have an option. So don't you, won't you feel that it's gonna be safer for you if we can enforce the regulations? We can eliminate the tents along the riverbed, along Crowthers Park, along Riverview Park? So you can, we can run more safely for your cross-country. Number one. Number two is your question is about how long can they stay in the shelter? In the model that we saw in Santa Ana, we're talking with the case managers, they're basically on their face. They want them to find housing right away.
Yeah.
Housing. So housing and even, even their shirt says, what's your housing plan? So they're always on top of it. And one of the best examples that they shared with us among the case managers in Santa Ana was they were working with a homeless, homeless client and they were able to connect this homeless individual with their relative in the Midwest. So all they need to do was put him, put him in a bus and then off he goes to the Midwest. So he was able to find a more long-term housing. So I don't unless, Mr. Stewart, unless there's a guaranteed timeframe, but I think it is gonna be on a case by case basis. That's something that we can ask tomorrow with Mercy House. But my feeling is they'll do it, they'll try their very best to make sure that they find long-term housing as soon as possible.
It's in our best interest to keep the term as short as we can keep it and we're gonna, we're gonna dig in on that a little bit. We'll negotiate with the judge and the advocate on this. I certainly don't, I don't have a lot of interest in somebody staying in the shelter for thirty days while they, they get their act together. That makes no sense at all. We're not gonna do that as far, I think that we are gonna dig in for a very short turnaround, like twenty-four, forty-eight hours, something like that. And there, mind you, so the riverbed's a little different circumstance for us. That's county area. Frankly, I'd advise you to run somewhere else other than the riverbed. We will clear it out. We will get it clean. But it has to be LA County Sheriff's Department working in concert with the LA County Flood Control and other entities. A lot of the folks that are coming up the riverbed, we know, are people coming up from Orange County who are getting squeezed out of North Orange County and moving up the riverbed. That is going to be an ongoing concern. So the riverbed is a little different animal. We're gonna have to work on that. I don't have the right answer for that yet, but I bet I will in two months. So we're working on that.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, but we'll make sure that the city gets cleaned up as far as the rest of it.
Okay. Thank you. I just have two more questions. So it's like the, the perimeter in which will be like, how, to the extent of which will the homeless be like? Can't think of the question.
Get out of the shelter? Or even loitering or getting out?
The riverbed. I'm trying to mention like the, the riverbed, like will you guys go that far to take in the homeless? Like to the riverbed up to?
Only the city bound, I'm sorry.
Yes.
City boundaries.
Yeah, we will go as far as our boundaries with the current sheriff's deputies that we have that patrol the city of Bellflower. However, there are gonna be operations where County Flood Control, the County Sheriff and we will work together on the riverbed to make occasional sweeps down there. It won't be driven by the city though. That would be driven by the county and because as we all know, the problem's getting worse. But we are working cooperative with the county and this is a matter of fact. Part of the reason, and we will have some enforcement with the riverbed, but not a tremendous amount because part of Judge Carter's count includes twenty folks that are in Bellflower that identify with Los Angeles County and those are the riverbed people. So we have some limited jurisdiction to go down into the riverbed with the sheriff's department to enforce this, but it's gonna be a little bit difficult to do, so we have to be careful how we do it. But we haven't forgotten about, we wanna make the riverbed safe. We want to make the bike trail safe and everywhere else where you run. And that's gonna be something we're gonna have to work on, but the emphasis will not be on the riverbed. The emphasis of our patrol will be at places like Artesia Woodruff, the city square, places like that where people are, have seen problems going on for months.
Okay. And then the cleanup of the, of where they stay, like in the sidewalks, they would be, would that be just thrown away?
No. We have an obligation to protect the, the possessions of homeless that are on sidewalk. Homeless person has an encampment on a sidewalk, we have a legal right and I, we actually have a specified, it's gonna be a negotiated limit. We have a negotiated, it'll be about the size of a, a regular sized trash barrel. We have to make sure that their possessions fit in those barrels and we have to store them as long as they're in the shelter.
Okay. Cause like I'm part of the Kwanis Key Club Service Group.
Can you move forward again?
Oh, sorry.
The microphone. Okay, there you go.
I'm part of the Kwanis Key Club Service Group and we do city cleanups and going down the streets, we would find the capsules and needles and anything that's left over.
Don't touch those. We'll take care of those on the streets and stuff. Yeah, leave those be.
Yeah, we leave them alone, but that's a concern.
Those we will, we will dispose of properly.
Okay.
So and again, and I would encourage you and your friends, if any more questions come up and you think of something, come to the meeting tomorrow, six thirty.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Stewart?
Can you, can you sign in, please?
Oh, sure.
There you go.
Just a couple of questions. Well, actually, the young lady asked quite a few of them. The homeless that live in their automobiles that are surrounding the city, would this take into account any of that? Moving that van and whatever pile that you wanna call it out of the area? Is that taken into any sort of consideration?
Yes. It's part of their, it's part of the anti, the ordinances that we just approved two weeks ago. And if somebody is living in their car in a neighborhood and they are homeless and we have, we have the, the, what's the word? Obligation to store that vehicle for them while they're in the homeless shelter, temporary services shelter. So yes, and we think we have a location that we can do that.
Still for the same twenty-four to forty-eight hours?
For as long as they're in the shelter.
Okay. And there is no maximum duration that they can stay in the shelter?
No, we haven't negotiated one yet. That's part of the, what we, as the city attorney indicated, we have an ongoing obligation to meet with the judge and, and the advocate that sued on behalf of the Orange County Catholic Worker. That's Ms. Carol Sobel is her name. And I'm presuming we will get together with her sometime in December to work out these limits, but we're gonna, it's gonna be a negotiation and we're gonna look for the tightest limits we can get. They're gonna look for the longest stay. It'll settle somewhere in the middle, but I don't expect it's gonna be a tremendously long stay.
Okay. And the, for lack of a better word or term, repeat offenders that go, want to go back time after time, is there a limit on the amount of terms that a homeless person can go back to the shelter?
We have not negotiated that with Catholic Worker yet and quite frankly, that was something I just started thinking about yesterday, what we do with the repeat offenders. And Matt, I wish I had an answer for you, but I don't, but I hope to have one in the next week or so.
Is that something that's going to be negotiated with Mercy House, I would assume? Okay. And that will be in the contract?
A lot of that is how you handle.
And Mercy House?
Yeah. So a lot of it is how you handle, Mercy House may have a, Mercy House may have a very good plan how to handle the, what you said, repeat offenders, as you say. I, I just don't know. And it's not something I even thought about till, literally till yesterday, so we'll get to it.
And I wasn't here for the very beginning of the, the presentation. The Sheriff's Department can take the homeless to the shelter themselves without, that is one of the institutions that can actually go to the Mercy House and drop somebody off?
We are going to authorize them to be, but their initial contact will not likely be the Sheriff's Department. It would likely be City Net or Kingdom Causes. But the Sheriff's Department has been working hand in glove with those entities, so they will all be referring entities into the shelter.
If I can add to that, I think the Sheriff's Department is trying to also put together an, what they call engagement team. So it's part of the LA Sheriff's Department, but not the sheriff itself.
Okay. I was gonna say, is this an obshoot of the Sheriff's Department?
It's part of that. Part of the Sheriff's Department, but not a deputized sheriff.
Well, Mr. Garza and I met with the Assistant Sheriff last week and talked about this issue and quite frankly, they're gonna go to school on us as much as we're gonna go to school on them. And they're gonna learn how to engage better than they do now.
On the job training?
Correct.
Unfortunately, or fortunately.
It's all, it's a brave new world, so.
Yeah, that's a fact. So thank you for your help.
All right, very good. Thank you.
So are we on the right track? What do you think? You're pretty, Mr.?
I'm sorry?
Are we on the right track here?
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown.
On the right track of dealing with the homeless?
Yeah. You always let us know what you think and I'd like for your opinion.
I'll be very blunt.
Yeah.
Mr. Garza, they're not my neighbors. They're not my friends. I don't know them. You know what? A great majority of them, it's well over eighty-five percent, choose this lifestyle. As Mr. Santana has stated, it is a free, very easy living lifestyle. They don't account to anybody. They don't hold any, anything to anybody other than themselves. You know, they are drug addicts, which is self-induced. They are alcoholics, which are self-induced. There are some out there that really do need our help and those I do not mind. The mentally ill, God help them. Let's be there for them. No problem with that at all. The ones that have done it to themselves, you know, very hard about this, too damn bad. Y'all did it to yourselves. Pull yourself up by your own damn boot strap.
Even if we agreed with you a hundred percent and I don't fully disagree with you. The authority to enforce those rules against folks like that, we have to do this.
And that I, I know. And that's where my rub is. And you know, I will agree, I'm glad to see the city doing something. You know, the last photo you showed of Marcus and all his wares, we all know who Marcus is. And the other homeless that are living around the set, around the town, it'd be nice to get rid of that blight and eyesore. Heavens, you can't go down Clark and Artesia there, that liquor store next to the, oh heavens. Yeah, that little laundromat liquor store right there. You know, there's a good half a dozen of them that stay there every damn day, do nothing but drinking all damn day long.
That is clearly a case of mental illness and he will be priority one and I'm actually hoping that we can find him help in all seriousness.
And again, you know, my attitude is we ought to reopen up Norwalk Mental Institution and start putting them back there where they really can get the services that are needed, but it's.
And that might come. We don't know. You know, we're working on the state.
Yeah, I mean, it befalls to us right now, hey, let's take the bull by the horns and go after it. And if this is what it takes, you know, I'll get behind the city one hundred percent. I got no qualm about this. Yeah, I, again, we clean up this eyesore, it's better for everybody in this room and in this city because it raises property values as well. Because when you go down to try to sell a house and you have vagrants living around the corner, well, people may tend not to wanna buy in that area. You know, doing business, you know, people may, I tend not to go to areas where I find it difficult to go into and out of because of homeless. You know, that's just me. I don't wanna deal with them. So you know, if we can clean that problem up, God bless us, let's go for it.
All right. I appreciate your insights. I know you always tell it like it is, so I wanted to hear that.
I'm glad.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much. So, so if you have any more questions, you wanna ask now or can you wait until tomorrow? Okay. It's already eight twenty-eight, so we'll just another, give it ten more minutes? And you have opportunity tomorrow to ask any other question tomorrow?
Yeah, I wanna ask everything.
Okay.
My name's Pete Incorn and I've counted with quite a few people that are homeless or in a car or whatever it have be unprofessionally though. And I'd like to make a couple of comments. This is a difficult situation. It has to do with policies. And I remember back in the seventies, people were just going to jail for drinking, maybe potse's or whatever it was. And there was a judge over in Downey, his name was Judge Emerson, and he tried something. He tried implementing a program where fortunately the anonymous programs, NAA, COKE or Gamblers, whatever they call them, he would send these people to these programs to learn that they had a problem. And a lot of these people don't think they have a problem. That's the problem, okay? And what started happening is you go to these meetings, you get your cards signed or you go to jail, one of the two. Fortunately, he monitored these people going through his court and he says, how come you didn't go? And they, well, I'm sorry, Judge, and they go back and of course, not everybody's gonna agree, they'll walk out the door. But what I'm saying to you is programs that are implemented lots of times work. It's better than just having the sheriff or the police haul them down time and time again. It's still not solving the problem. So as a couple of these people here had said, I think that they're addicted, they know how to get out of it and they need some kind of a program. So that would be my question as far as them screwing up on their program, can they come back? Is it gonna be a caseworker that's monitoring them intensively to see if they maybe deserve a second chance? And maybe they can go back through and be happy that time. I've hired people, not from Home Depot or whatever, but I've hired people to help me on my own jobs and this and that. And I had one guy hired, he was a Bellflower resident. That's why I used him. And he's a good guy. And he worked with me for about two years. And one day he was over at Ralph's, you know, shopping, getting his stuff, cause I was giving him money and he's still living in his car. I let him stay in my trailer. That's what it was at the end. And one day he's at Ralph's and he had a cardiac arrest in his, in his van. Out there in the car and the doors open and the, of course, somebody from the store came out and, you know, he's tying. So they called the ambulance, they took him away and he had nobody. Lakewood Regional didn't know what to do with the guy. And it was so bad, his mom feared going to see her son because they would try to attack her with the bill. So he sat late in the morgue, passed away for about a month before they processed him through the county probably. And you know what happened after that? I ended up taking care of a lot of this stuff and he squeezed my hand at the last. You know, he's going brain dead and he squeezed my hand. But what I'm saying to you is his friends from Bellflower who are homeless or maybe in their car or whatever, came by and they, man, that's the best I've ever seen him. He, he was doing great. He had a great life for two years. He had a really good life and they looked like, can you help me? But you know, I'm just one guy. I can't help everybody, but they gotta do it, not. But, you know, I'm just one guy, I can't help everybody, but they gotta do it, not me, they have to do it. And that got their attention. So if you got this shelter, I definitely think you have to have a rock-solid program with people who know what they're doing, who can counsel these people. Maybe it's through the Self-Help Group, you know, AA and A, or whatever it may be, I don't know. Maybe you guys don't have the answer to that yet. But I do believe our Bellflower residents want help standing up. Maybe somebody moved here from ten buck to, who knows, but, and maybe they're now a Bellflower resident based on their social security number, or whether they get GR, GFR, or whatever they get, you know? I know that process will happen.
Mr. Incorn, do you have a question about the shelter?
Well, I have a question. Yeah, are you gonna have, do you have those programs in place to, to mentor the people and give them some kind of?
That's why we're contracting the service with Mercy House.
No, it's, those, those programs are outside of our, our, our concerns at the moment.
Or the shelter.
They would, they would be part of law as general continuum of care.
They'd be part of what?
Part of the continuum of care through the LA County Housing Services Association.
So, one of the social workers or caseworkers there would refer them to somebody else?
Correct, this is, for, the, the, another term used for TSS is a navigation center. There'll be a service provider circulating through, and we'll try to route these people to the right service.
That was my question. But I do believe our Bellflower residents will benefit from it.
Okay.
Okay, you said comments or questions, so my question was answered, thank you.
So, do you think this is the right solution?
I think it's a great start.
Okay.
I think people will appreciate it, just like they came to me and was, you know, they want to help.
All right.
Somebody from outside the area, you know, you don't know what response they'll get, but I, I do believe like Judge Emerson, he started implementing a program that worked for a lot of people to this day.
All right, thank you. All right, so if you have any more questions, please come to the meeting tomorrow at six thirty, eight eight three three Cedar Street. Okay, so you have all night to think about any question you might have. All right, next item, Mr. Stewart. I'll give you time to move to your other, other seat. All right, public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the city council.
Okay, anyone here would like to speak on the not agenda item? Please sign in and state your name for the record. None? Okay, we're moving along.
I'll have to wait till everybody else got up first.
I didn't want to be, I didn't want to be the first.
Don't wait too long, Joe.
This is November, my annual November eleventh tribute to the veterans.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Okay, I, Joseph Swetko, respectfully request your indulgence in my talk here tonight as I pay our honorable respect to all surviving veterans of our armed forces, of all wars, for our community and myself, as we had no meeting yesterday, November eleven, twenty nineteen, which now has turned into a national holiday. It was formally observed as Armistice Day in many years past. We salute you all for the sacrifices you have endured in giving your service to our country and the world's freedom and liberation from evil bad men whose aim was to rule our entire, entire world for their own benefit. Sounds like a lot of today's politicians, don't it? Yes, we all lucky to be alive here today, living in freedom because of those brave heroes who gave up their lives and futures for all of United States of American people and even of the world to boot against the bad, evil men who wanted to dominate our world. Those heroes paid with their lives for all of us. I look at the letters in the abbreviation, capital size, USA, as meaning, in the common sense, the first two relating to US as us, and the later A standing for all, us all. Not correct English, but appropriate words for mine, of mine. As a surviving veteran of World War II, I feel humbled and proud to speak up for our brave heroes from all wars that gave us all this great nation of America, and it is my honor to pay tribute to guys who speak no more. So people will always pause and remember their sacrifices. Particularly in World War II, when America, with our allies, saved this entire world for all people everywhere. Remember Pearl Harbor, December seven, nineteen forty-one, was the rallying cry of that era of time, never to be forgotten, as America saved the world. Sadly to say, though, was our national leaders, including President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, were asleep at the switch, listening to enemy diplomats talking peace in our nation's capital while enemy bombers were bombing our ships and service personnel at Pearl Harbor. We were not totally prepared, even though war, even though war was being fought in Europe for several years before. It took the bombing to spur America into action for world freedom. It's a hell of a way to wake up, but it spurred the action of stopping world domination. The enemy forces were tough, smart, and well-equipped to almost conquer our world. Pearl Harbor awakened a sleeping giant, America. The dominators had conquered many countries before, all over the globe, and had to be stopped at all costs because the survival of this world was at stake. Thank God that we were able to be the catalyst that saved this entire world from one end to the other, Europe to the Pacific. America supplied all our allies with much of the material needed in the war. Manpower, troops, airplanes, ships, guns, ammunition, food, medicines, tanks, to stop the domination after four years of war and millions of people being killed on both sides in the conflict. I remember Colin P. Kelly diving down the smokestack of enemy, of an enemy's destroyer ship after he had dropped all his bombs to destroy that destroyer that was killing our American troops and sailors. Plus, I remember four F dock workers in either Philadelphia or New Jersey, I forget which, refusing to load up a ship, an ammunition ship destined for the Pacific Islands. That's not written in your history books, and you won't find it anywhere, but that's what I remember through my service at that time. And I thought them guys were traitors for not wanting to load up an ammunition ship that the guys needed badly in the Pacific Ocean area. The sad part today is that some of those same countries we saved then, saved then, are now superpowers and possible enemies of America. Their gratitude then is completely forgotten now, and this is a very troubled world ready to explode into what may be the end of all civilization as we know it through hydrogen and atomic bombs, so forth. Sad to say, even in our once great America, our political leaders are putting themselves on party above the country's survival by really goofy politics that had divided USA all in groups, into groups seeking domination, even if it means tearing America apart and down from within. Shame on all those who tear America apart. Such was not the case when I was growing up. America had more value for all, not anymore. I call them traitors for the destruction they are doing now. More next year for November eleventh. Hoping to, I'll hope, freedom world. I'll close by saying now, may God bless us all and America and the world too.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you for your tribute to our veterans, and thank you for your service.
You're welcome, mighty welcome.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff, wow. Great news. News crews were here in our town today, and it's good stuff. Good Day LA was here for our musical that's going to be happening, starting tomorrow night. The Lion King runs through Saturday. We hope that everybody can stop by and see it. If you guys have, anybody's seen any of it, it's just amazing. I just went over there and was talking to Stephen, and the costumes are just unbelievable. So if everybody could get a chance to get over there from Wednesday through Saturday, it's a great event. Wow, thank you so much, everybody that came to our grand opening that we had in our ribbon cutting for rose cremation. I just have to tell you, it turned into a fabulous event, and there were over a hundred people that came, and I would like to thank everybody that did come, and I wanted to just say it meant a lot. And regarding Small Business Saturday, I'm looking for customers, so just to let you know, I'd be a part of it.
I'm, I'm not ready yet, so.
I think you're looking in the wrong place for customers.
I just want to let everybody know, okay? Also, kudos, kudos, kudos to the city of Bellflower, the city I love, and everybody else out here. For you guys taking that jump, that leap, pulling the reins, and doing what is necessary for the homeless in this community. I could not be more prouder of this city than, it's just an amazing thing that you guys are doing. And you're right, you're doing it in a charitable way, you're doing it in a way where we show compassion, and we're there to help them. And I just want to say how proud I am of the city council and staff and everyone who's got a rein on this, and thank you so very much. And lastly, I just wanted to let you know that the passing of Jean Engelbach, she passed away, and her services are pending. So I just wanted to let you be aware, okay? The obituary will be following soon. So thank you very much, and again, thank you, city of Bellflower.
Robin, before you go, thank you so much for having us at your ribbon cutting. It was a great event. A question about the arts-allowed Lion King?
Yes.
What is that JR on the?
Junior.
Oh, junior. So, so it's a mini version of the Lion King production? Oh, there you go, okay.
But it's, if you've, have you had a chance to walk over and see the sets?
Okay.
It's amazing.
All right, thank you so much.
Mayor, maybe I'll just make one remark before I have to leave because my lift is here, and as the home, guys talking about the homeless situation, have they ever thought of a barracks-style housing, housing for the homeless, maybe, because each guy in a, that's the way I grew, I mean, you know, in the military, that way, we lived in barracks, and we all got along, we kinda watched over each other, and we had pride in the way we lived and so forth like that. And maybe consider that as a possibility somehow, that you can house a lot of people in one room rather than have a lot of individual rooms?
Oh, there's something to think about. No individual rooms, Joe, no.
We'll invite you over, you'll see it, you'll, you'll like that. We'll invite you over when we're done, you can see it.
And you, you must have seen the picture earlier, there are beds spread across open area.
It's barracks.
It's a barracks.
Where's that?
When we build it, it will be a barracks.
Oh, okay, oh, a big barracks style, okay, good.
Yeah, not individual rooms.
They're more of a senate incentive to get better because their fellow compadres around, around them will maybe police them, and you, and it'll save the sheriff department some trouble.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you'll come to the grand opening.
Anyone else? All right, being, there being none, we're gonna move on to the next item, Mr. Stewart, item. Hold on, there are no public hearings, just wanna make the announcement here, no public hearings. And so we're moving on to item twelve A.
This is consideration of possible action adopt resolution number nineteen dash eighty-seven, a resolution authorized the city manager designate need to apply for SB two planning grants program funding and execute all grant program documents, and Ms. Corpus is here to tell you what's on her mind.
Ms. Corpus, it's yours.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The State Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD, has released funding for a planning grants program under the provisions of Senate Bill Two. The purpose of the housing grant is to, is for the preparation, adoption, and implementation to streamline housing approvals and accelerate housing production. Bellflower is eligible to receive a maximum of three hundred and ten thousand dollars through this planning grant. Staff has identified at least two projects that would potentially be eligible to receive this grant. The first is the Housing Element Update. Every eight years, the housing element needs to be updated in order to account for our RENA numbers, our Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers. And so our sixth cycle is coming up, which would cover the planning period between twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-eight, and staff proposes to use this funding to help fund that project. The second project is an expansion of the Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan. The council recently approved the TOD SP, which would guide future land uses and provide some development standards around the future light rail station. During the public hearing process, there were comments that there are other areas outside of the boundary of the specific plan that could help benefit with this, with, with the specific plan. The expansion would facilitate additional housing opportunity in the city. So before you tonight is the resolution. If the council adopts this resolution, the council would authorize the city manager or his designate to apply for three hundred and ten thousand dollars of SB two funding and would authorize the city manager or designate to execute all necessary grant documents and agreements. And that concludes my presentation, I can answer any questions.
Thank you for your report, a couple of questions. I'm assuming that there's no matching funds? There's no match?
There's no match.
Okay, that's good. Also, my recollection is the, the temporary shelter services can be included in the housing element? Is that?
I'm glad you asked, because originally with our talks with the technical assistance team, we thought that some of the planning and design work, especially including the zoning changes, would be funded, or could be funded through the SB two grants. However, as of last week, our second meeting with the HCD team and the technical assistance team, we were informed that we were, would likely not be eligible to get SB two grant money for temporary housing.
We're gonna ask again.
Because I, if I remember correctly, on the settlement agreement, there was mention about the agreement can be part of the housing element.
I, I think we're gonna ask again, and, and press our point a little bit harder, and see if we can make it eligible.
Okay, I think, let's, let's keep trying. Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Any question of Ms. Corpus? Mayor Potem Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the three hundred and ten thousand dollars that's available from the state for us, it's for planning-related purposes, correct?
That's correct.
And is this like a use it or lose it type of situation?
That is correct.
Okay.
So if we don't use it, we, we lose it.
Okay, and the deadline to apply for it is?
Is the end of the month.
Totally, okay. The other question I have is of the, let's say we authorize tonight to apply for this. Of the three hundred and ten thousand, how much of that would go towards the TOD specific plan expansion?
Right now, with our preliminary estimates, we're looking about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay. Would that include environmental clearance of, of the specific plan itself?
It would not.
It would not, okay.
It would not.
And then my last, well, actually, two more questions. Last week, there was a pretty controversial decision that, that the Southern California Association of Governments made with regards to the Regional Housing Needs Assessment RENA. And I know that our city council had approved a prior number, based on the older formula, right? And so.
No, no, let me correct, it's not the number, it's the methodology.
Methodology. So, with the decision that the SCAG board made last week, how much is our housing commitment now, according to this new tentative?
Methodology.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, so as of last week, um, using this new methodology, our RENA is three thousand six hundred ninety-three.
So we went from two hundred to a thousand to thirty-six hundred?
Hold on.
Hold on, hold on.
Let me, let's finish the question first, okay, go ahead.
So, so, so that's, that's, uh, interesting.
Very interesting.
So.
Blame it on the mayor.
Right. So the question I have is, if the TOD specific plan and the opportunities, potential opportunities for increased housing, uh, would this help, would this planning grant help towards us working on progress towards that?
That's correct.
That's it, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I, I was about to, to my thing that I would like to bring and, uh, update our council on that issue. The RENA numbers, um, if you recall correctly, um, we approved, met, um, option three. And then, um, staff of SCAG, which Southern California Association of Governments came back saying that, um, uh, all those three options did not meet the legal requirements of C H D. So it was modified and came up with option four, which increased our, our allocation from, I think about three hundred to a thousand, if I recall correctly.
Approximately, yes.
Uh, and last, uh, last Thursday, uh, we had the Regional Council meeting, which is basically the governing body of the Southern California Association of Governments. And, um, I, I was shocked. I was shocked. I was shocked. Coming into the meeting, because there's about sixty districts representing SCAG. And ours is District Twenty-four, I represent District Twenty-four, which consists of Signal Hill, Paramount, Lakewood, and Bellflower. Uh, when I saw the, um, the delegates from other districts, I was already concerned because the city of L.A., all their council members are district members because of this magnitude of L.A. So they have fifteen council members plus Mayor Garcetti. Mind you that every month, there's a meeting, they don't come to meetings. Only one or two will show up. On Thursday, I counted heads, there were twelve council members that I know of who were present at the meeting. So I know there's something, they're cooking up something. And then when the mayor of Riverside spoke about a modified version of the methodology, their, their biggest battle cry, so to speak, is the city of Coachella Valley, the cities of Palm Desert, no, Desert Heart Springs. And their contention is that they have the land to build housing, but they don't have jobs. They don't have jobs. So what they did is they took out, remember there are four components in terms of coming up with methodology number four, which is transportation, employment, and local input. Local input was the major factor in, in method four, methodology number four. And that's about fifty percent. And they push for local input to be eliminated in the coming up with the formula. So with that elimination of local input, the cities that are, that are close to transportation, some employment were, were hit with more housing requirements. That means Gateway Cities, Orange County, and the Beach Cities were hit hard. So the number of, the number of housing that needs to be produced in California for the next eight years, it's a fixed number, it's one point three million units. There's no change. It's a matter of how do you allocate one point three million? So if, if Bellflower gets less, someone else will get more. So with this new methodology that they push, Coachella Valley, San Bernardino, Riverside got a lot less because again, their contention is they don't have jobs. They have the land, but they don't have jobs. So the, by, by shifting the, the formula more weighted towards transportation and employment, our city, the Gateway Cities, was really hit hard. So it increased from one thousand to three thousand. So it's not the end yet, there's gonna be public hearings, I emailed Mr. Stewart and Ms. Corpus, there's gonna be public hearing. Um, our, the closest to us is December four, and I plan to go there at the COG office in Paramount on December fourth. And then after that, we can go to the appeal process because I think we need to appeal this. Okay? So it's.
You'll be up to twelve thousand by the next meet.
You, you should see my, my reaction when I saw those twelve council members from L.A. Said, they don't come here every month and suddenly they showed up. And my, my biggest, my biggest, um, I, I was really, I was really concerned because the RENA process was done over the period of three to, more than three months, four months, I think, six months, six months ago. So it's a methodological process to come up with public hearing and all these things and came up with method one, two, three, and then changed it to four. And suddenly, the last minute, they proposed an amendment. And unfortunately, they have the, it's a, it's a democracy, they have the votes, so they won. So sorry to be the bearer of badness, but, uh, we're not giving up, we're gonna appeal this process.
Every week it's something.
Well, it's democracy that, I mean.
Democracy that don't work.
Yeah. Okay, any other question about the SB two? We got sidetracked, but it's really the, really the topic, so.
Mr. Mayor, uh, just, just quickly, yeah, no, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna follow that downer, but that, yeah. But yeah, we're gonna have to really work hard on this one, but. And I'm glad I'm just sitting on the transportation aspect at SCAG because I don't, I don't wanna get into, because that would really, uh, try my patience, but, um, but again, uh, again, just think about some of the analysis that, that's, that's occurred. And you know, I've seen documents through SCAG that shows Bellflower has a somewhat stagnant growth city that, you know, there's only so much population, very, very low numbers. And that's why when we first heard the, you know, two hundred or whatever it was, it was like, yeah. And I was like, oh, perfect, that's, that's totally in line with, with their studies, but that's another thing. That's, you know, uh, again, as we know now, things change, uh, just by the week. Um, uh, but in regards to this planning grant, again, this is, this is the closest thing to some free state money, so to speak. And it's, you know, non-competitive, so all we gotta do is ask, we've asked, we're gonna be asking, um, formally, so, uh, and, uh, I, I would expect, uh, this, this money to come forward, it's, it's just always not enough, you know, so. So that was more comment than any question. I know staff's working really hard on this and, uh, we've talked about RENA and, you know, it's always been a challenge over the decades RENA has. Um, so I'll just leave it at that, and if there are any other comments, if not, happy to make a motion.
We'll do it.
Oh, okay.
I think it's all been said.
So how can we, how can we give up free money?
Yeah.
No, so, uh, Ray can make a motion.
Go ahead.
So I'm happy to make the motion to adopt resolution nineteen dash eighty-seven. And that's a resolution authorize the city manager or designate to apply for the SB two planning grants program funding and execute all grant program documents.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hamada, seconded by Councilmember Coops for the City Council of Bellflower to adopt resolution nineteen dash eighty-seven. Uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Santanas.
Aye. Uh, we'll rearrange the agenda for tonight. Uh, we will go ahead first with the consent calendar, we'll, and we'll discuss, uh, item twelve, uh, twelve B last. So anyone would like to pull any item on the consent calendar or any recusals?
Mr. Mayor, may I say fourteen F, there is a substitute staff report with some initial.
That's right, there's a correction.
It's included in your packet and available for public review, fourteen F.
Thank you for reminding me.
Mr. Mayor, fourteen C, I'm conflicted out on since I have various properties located along that thoroughfare. So I may not vote on fourteen C.
Okay, let the record reflect that Councilmember Coops is recusing himself on item fourteen C. Any other recusals, pull item?
I'll move the consent calendar as amended.
As amended, okay. Motion by Councilmember Denton, seconded by Mayor Protim Garza to approve the consent calendar. You wanna pull any item, Anita?
Uh, yes, I wanna discuss one of the items.
Okay, what item is that?
Fourteen F.
Fourteen F, okay. Okay, we'll just vote first on the rest of the agenda items.
Okay.
So we're gonna pull fourteen F, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Santanas.
Aye. Okay, Anita, your question on fourteen F?
Okay, I'm looking at this and it says that there is going to be, uh, five hundred people are going to be, um, asked about a political issue and to vote on it. I wanna know what is the question going to be and how come there are only going to be five hundred people out of eighty thousand people, which is point oh six three percent of the community, that are going to be able to make whatever this decision is.
Mayor, I can answer that.
Can I start?
Sure.
I'd like to start on this. Um, the five hundred people will not vote on this. Um, I wonder if you got the revised, um, discussion?
I did not, all I got was what was on the.
Okay, uh, if you can share a copy of that because that gives you a background, uh, why we're doing a survey. Uh, just in a nutshell, Anita, uh, we, there was a subcommittee forum, which is the Revenue Subcommittee, uh, composed of myself and Councilmember Denton and thirteen other members of the community. And we were tasked to identify possible, um, revenue sources. So the committee met twice and we came up with, the committee came up with a few suggestions like sales tax, uh, transit occupancy tax, and then also business license. And that those recommendations were presented at the last meeting, I believe, of the City Council. And the City Council directed staff to kind of gauge the, the sentiment of our residents, uh, what will appeal to them. Uh, in terms of your question about five hundred, again, they're not voting on any tax measure. It's a scientific measure of, it's a random sample that they will select. And we have used the service of our consultant before, uh, to ask questions about, from fifty individuals randomly selected and kind of make a, uh, an assessment whether it, there's a strong support or a strong, um, opposition. We've done this before, so five hundred is, is a good number. Uh, if you talk, speak with any statistician, that's a good, uh, number. Minus, plus or minus, you know, uh, margin of error, things like that. But for the most part, if there's a strong opposition, a strong support, we usually follow the, the advice of our consultant. So Mr. Stewart, if you wanna add?
No, you, you hit it right on the head, it's a statistically valid number, uh, last number that they used exactly is four hundred and seventy-something. And it gets us a statistical probability of plus minus five and a half percent on whether or not it's an accurate measure. So it's, uh, the city has found it to be useful in years past. Frankly, it was the same kind of survey that we use when we learned about our homeless issues and other things like that. The, the, the surveyor, the company that we use, Fairbanks Masland, one of the best, certainly the best I've ever worked with in my career. And those guys, for the eight years that I've been here, they've been on spot on every time, so.
Okay.
I'm not gonna question their methods, yeah.
Actually, I'm glad you clarified that because I thought it was something that was gonna be on ballot somewhere for, for us to vote on. And I was like, hey, wait a minute.
Not yet.
That's kind of a low fall for that, but I, I get what you're saying and thank you for clarifying that.
Sure, okay, you're welcome, anytime.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve fourteen F?
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Denton, seconded by Councilmember Coops to approve fourteen F, roll call please.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Santanas.
Aye. All right, fourteen B.
Twelve B.
Oh, I mean, twelve B, sorry, twelve.
I usually, you introduce it and then, sorry.
That was a standoff.
I'm sorry.
You're right. This, this item is consideration of possible action, read the title, only wait further action, introduce ordinance number thirteen eighty-two, an ordinance amending Bellflower Municipal Code BMC fourteen point one six point zero two zero regarding cannabis dispensary hours of operation. There you go.
Thank you, as a city manager, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this item due to the fact that I have a conflict due to an employer-client relationship.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let the record reflect that Mayor Protim Garza is recusing himself on item twelve B. Okay, with that, uh, Ms. Tover, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, I'm bringing forward item twelve B, ordinance amending the Bellflower Municipal Code Regarding Cannabis Dispensary Hours of Operation. Currently dispensary hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from nine AM to seven PM, and they're closed on Sundays. After a year of working with and speaking with dispensary operators, it's come to our attention that an increase in hours would be beneficial to the revenue that they would gain from increased sales with increased hours of operation. This evening, staff's recommendation is to increase the number of hours that a dispensary is allowed to be open. Suggested hours are Sunday through Thursday from nine AM to nine PM, and Friday and Saturdays from nine AM to ten PM. This would increase sales opportunity with the extra hours in the evening and Sundays being open. At this time, staff's available for questions. And we do have a couple dispensary operators here if council has questions for them as well. Thank you.
Uh, just one question, um, what does the state law allow in terms of hours and days of operation?
I don't have the exact state, I did do some research with local jurisdictions, the city of Long Beach, Santa Ana, and looked at the other hours, and those are open until ten most days.
Okay, so we're assuming that, um, they're in accordance with the state law?
Correct.
And, um, they're open on Sundays also?
Correct.
Okay, all right, very good. Any question on Ms. Tover?
No.
No.
Oh, just a few, Randy. Uh, just, just, uh, just sort of to get, uh, everybody on, on the same wavelength and, um,
you mentioned neighboring communities have them and, um, just ballpark, uh, within a five mile radius, um, how many dispensaries are? Thirty?
Yeah, there's a large number.
My guess would have been about that, all right, so roughly that. And they have those hours, those kind of hours. Um, and now to focus on Bellflower and maybe, is Joel still here or Jeff, maybe you'll have to? I, I, again, it's just, it's just, uh, crime stats.
We've had.
Yeah. Just that one I remember from somebody tried to jump the fence, but that's been it since. Now, yeah, okay, it, it, it sort of still bewilts me why there's only two of the four that are operating, but there, I, I just heard news.
I think you could honestly say three now.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, and then the fourth one is, is in, in Plancha.
Within a month, they say.
So we've advanced it to that, all right. So, um, um, all right, uh, yeah, and that's what I've heard about the, the crime, it hasn't happened, you know.
Correct.
A lot of people expected it, uh, and, uh, these are all, um, you know, consistent to the zone that's, you know, and yes, I understand that there may be some, uh, legal knock and form uses within proximity, but sometimes in, in every, in every zone, it always has some of those, uh, so you think on the big picture. I'm usually, in years I've served as a planning commissioner and now as council, I've made every effort to, uh, to encourage consistency when it comes to, uh, retail competitiveness, competitiveness, uh, and that, um, as long as, uh, things are working and there's no disruption to the community and so on, it, it's, it's kind of like the fair thing to do, so. And, uh, I think, uh, oh, again, yes, when this first came about, when I was seated here and, uh, you know, I'll say I was on the fence. And, uh, and, but I did finally declare that I'd be supportive of this as, you know, as long as they're out in the open. These are legal, they're out in the open, they're abiding by laws, and with that, we've curtailed the illegal operations, so it's where that there's not one in town that's illegal, so. So we're, we're taking care of business here in town, so. That's, I'll just wanna put out there, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'd like to open up public comments. Anyone who would like to speak on this? Um, operators, why, why do you want more time? Why do you want more days? Let's start with you. You waited so long, so I wanted to hear from you guys. And thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I know. I know you guys have heard a lot from me over the, uh, last few months. I'm Elliot Lewis, EO Holdings LLC, uh, I think Ms. Tover, you know, you made.
I'm Elliot Lewis, EOL Holdings LLC. I think Ms. Stover, you know, made some good points. Long Beach, I was open nine, delivery ten, Santa Ana's ten. To your question, the state law, I'm pretty sure, I'm like ninety-five percent is ten. Generally, we do most of our business at the end of the day. And, you know, it, it's sometimes tough for people to get back at seven PM. So I also think that it's a, a safety issue. Obviously, we want the, the increased revenue. But, you know, the, the illicit market never closes, so to give them a, a good safe option, nine, especially on the weekend, ten o'clock, I think it's a perfect solution. You know, Sundays as well. I do think some of the business is probably being lost to Long Beach. I know in particular guys that are, you know, on Sundays, go down to the, the store we have there on Cherry and the, the four oh five. And then it's just a matter of, you know, having a chance to, to be competitive. The change to recreational, we're really grateful. It's really helped us a lot. Probably triple, quadruple revenue, we're still growing. We're almost getting to the black. We're like almost there. I think this will, will push us over the top. You know, just quick math. And our numbers continue to increase now that we're kind of have a fighting chance with the recreational. But you add in Sunday, that's four or five days. You know, we're maybe seven, eight grand as we get going, maybe ten, twelve grand. So you're talking about, you know, fifty thousand in revenue right there. And then those two hours at the end of the day are substantial. They could be as much as a third of the, the business. So I forgot the exact estimate that I sent, but I think with full hours and recreational, our goal, reasonable goal would be, you know, around four hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And like I said, since they've gone wreck, we've seen a good increase. You know, I'm just kind of freelancing here, but I think we went from like, you know, almost dead in the water, like forty, fifty grand to a hundred and forty grand. Last month was a hundred and ninety thousand total revenue. And then this November has been really good. I think we're on pace. You know, I don't know, I'm just ballparking two thirty, two forty, so the, it's still, more and more people are coming in. And I think the hours will give us a, an opportunity to compete against, you know, some of the other markets as well as the illicit market.
Do you think the holidays will kind of affect your business?
Well, it's funny you'd say that. I, I always joke that people must have to get, you know, intoxicated before they go see their family. The, the best day of the year, one of them, is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So I would say top three or four days. So I, and like, right before Christmas, that, like Christmas Eve, the day before, we do really, really good. So I think that like, it's, I don't know what that is, but, you know, the ongoing joke, we've had Wednesdays before Thanksgiving. I'd say with the exception of like, the four twenty thing, which is a special cannabis thing, is just typically our, our best day. So I think people feel like they need to prepare to, you know, visit their in-laws or their families. And they, we seem to do really good on those days. It's an interesting fact, but it seems to play out year over year. So I think it will be good for business the holidays. Generally, people like to have fun and maybe need a little extra to tolerate their, you know, their families.
All right, thank you.
Consider a visit your in-laws special or something.
Okay, anyone else? You've been patiently sitting there, so please get up and, and talk to us.
Aye.
If you can sign in?
So, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, I love the word "Bellflorians." I think that's kind of awesome. So my name is Josh Estrada. I'm actually the new store manager, opening, opening and bringing to life Deli by Kaliva, which is going to be opening in just a few days. So, just to kind of echo the comments from earlier, we're really excited about the potential of the revised hours as well. It would match kind of those competitors that we have in the nearby cities. Also kind of bring us more with what is kind of, what people are used to within looking for plant-based solutions, being open until nine or ten. We don't operate on Sundays as well. We also project a great impact to our revenue, which we're also really excited about. But more importantly, it would also allow us to create kind of more jobs and potentials for people to work within this industry who are excited about it. So I think that's one of the things that we're looking forward to the most, is kind of that opportunity after we open too.
You, you said deli? Do you also serve ham, turkey?
Well, yeah, not yet. But we won't. But it's kind of that pun on that early Americana feel. We have a really beautiful concept that we're bringing to life. And of course, we're going to have a ribbon cutting. We're going to invite the members of the Chamber of Commerce, our wonderful City Council as well. So we're really excited to get things up and running.
And when do you plan to open?
So we have our soft opening that will happen this week.
This week?
Probably Thursday or Friday. And then our grand opening ceremonies will be invited and offered next week.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers.
Good evening, Priscilla. Thank you for waiting.
So I know I'm probably just...
Priscilla, can you bring down the microphone? There you go.
Sorry, sorry. I shouldn't have to do that. Anyway, I, I know I'm probably just wasting my time here because I feel that you guys already have your decision made. So, but I just kind of wonder, so there was eleven or twelve permits issued, and as of now, only four of them are open. And it seems like they keep asking for more and more and more and more, and we keep giving them more and more and more. But they haven't given us what they promised to begin with. So why do we keep giving them more? I mean, I understand, okay, you know, I, okay, when they, when they applied, when they filled out these applications, I'm assuming they can all read, and it said medical. Then they said, well, recreational, that'll give, bring us more money. Gave them recreational. They read the hours were Monday through Saturday, nine to seven. They agreed to those. They signed the application. Three of the four already run dispensaries, so they know they're busy hours. So why did they sign up for this if they didn't think it was going to be profitable? So now they're asking for more hours because now this is going to bring more money. But why don't they get their businesses open? And that would even bring more money for the city. Because how long are we going to drag our feet on this? Some of these people have had their permits since December of two thousand seventeen, so we're going on two years. So what, I mean, the city keeps giving to them, and they're not, they're not giving back to the city. They're not holding to accountable to their, you're not holding them accountable to their obligations that they signed up for when they applied. So now we're going to extend their hours, and that's going to give them more. You know, I, I kind of don't understand. Like, we have, like, joint forces, you know, they were supposed to be open already. Kaliva was supposed to be open on August first, I mean, yeah, August first. Here it is, middle of November, and they're finally going to open. So, you know, it just seems like everything's held up and they're not bringing in the money that they need, which is why the, the, I can't remember what it was called. The committee, you know, came up with other sources of revenue. And it was stated, because these businesses aren't bringing in the revenue that they promised, so now we're having to find more avenues of revenue. So why is, why is this right? I mean, we've got all these people, they're going to, you know, the four, I'm sorry, joint forces is supposed to have all four of them open. They have one of them open, and it's been open for what, five, six months or something? So what, what is the big holdup? I mean, we heard back with them in particular, back in June, I think it was, when they got their permit for the dispensary. Oh, just a few accent walls and this and that, we'll be open soon. They don't even have a name on their building. So what kind of effort are they putting forth when you guys are willing to keep giving and giving and giving to them? They signed the application. They seen, A, it was medical only, and I understand along the way there were some changes. So you guys went recreational to give them more money. They seen the hours. If they're already running dispensaries, they know they're busy hours. They know seven o'clock was early. So I know, I think, I don't remember the one, the last meeting was, that everybody, you know, joked about the impulse buys. Okay, we need to give everybody time for their impulse buys. I'm really, I mean, impulse buys? We really need extra time to go buy our marijuana? Seriously? I mean, I know I'm dating myself, but what did we do when banks were open from nine to five, Monday through Friday? We found a way to get to the bank, right? If we needed to get to the bank, then they were open till what, maybe noon on Saturdays? We found a way to get to the bank. So if these people really want their marijuana, I think they can find a way to get there during these, these hours of operation, correct? I mean, it seems like you guys keep going back on your word of everything you've, you've, you know, you've said you're going to do, and you keep going back on your word. And I don't understand that. So a lot of you have said, you know, I will never go marri, I'll never go recreational, I'll never go recreational. And you know who you are. And then you did. And it's always money, money, money. All they're doing is putting out that little bait and pulling it for you guys to go, oh, more money, more money. And you guys are biting. And this is getting ridiculous. But in two years, I know all of them haven't had their permits for two years. I understand that, okay? But something's got to, something's got to happen. They've got to start into, holding up their end of their deal. I say we hold off into the hours until these guys can get their businesses open and running. And then maybe consider that. And one question I have is, why did you guys not have them open on Sundays, the dispensaries? Was there a reason for that?
I, I don't recall. It's been a long time. Been how many years?
Yeah, it has been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, from the beginning of the process, we knew it was an imperfect process. And council decided on these hours based on their best knowledge. And as we've gone through the process and working with cannabis dispensaries, we've learned that increased hours would allow for that. Like the mayor said, I don't know what the exact reason for Sunday's closing was.
Can't speak to the Sunday hours. I do know that the field itself has changed dramatically and it's not even close to being, is what it was represented at two years ago. And medicinal marijuana was viable two years ago. It was based on a lot of models through Washington and Colorado, et cetera. But for whatever reason, the state changed all the regulations and totally took all the mojo out of that market.
Right.
I don't know why. They just did. So, you know, we're, one of the reasons, not that we're giving them everything they want. I think that, at least in the beginning, the dispensaries and the operators wanted to go and do a medicinal marijuana facility. And we thought that was viable. Certainly, the numbers that we had seen seemed like it would be. The state and, and the market changed dramatically. And frankly, I don't think anybody estimated how much of the illegal market there would be in this state. For whatever reason, that's just completely out of hand. Hopefully, they get a handle on it. I don't know. I mean, knock on wood, we seem not have had a problem in this city, but I know they're all over the place. People are griping about it up and down the state. And quite frankly, the business isn't nearly as lucrative as it was projected to be two or three years ago. But the numbers are still fairly decent, and the numbers I'm hearing from Mr. Louis here are pretty good. I mean, that's decent revenue coming in to the city for a small retail facility, and especially one that really has had no issues to speak of, that we, that we know of, with either crime or, or people hanging out or inappropriate dealings going on there at all. So it's still a positive for the community, I think. You know, I mean, perception's everything, but I still believe as far as operations, it's still a positive for the community. The, I think the environment has just changed dramatically. And, and then the second thing is, we want to make sure the businesses, we've, we've gone a, a far path with these guys. And they, and the, the licensing process was torturous. You know that. I mean, we've all suffered through this thing together. So now it's just a matter of, we don't want to do this again. And if this fails, I don't think anybody will do it again. I think that issue, we're not going to mess with it again. But as long as these guys are open, we want to give them a fighting chance to be competitive. And, you know, each of the steps that we've taken are giving them a fighting chance to be competitive. And I think that's where we stand today. I mean, I, look, I understand your point of view. I don't even necessarily disagree with all of it, but I mean, I think that's where we stand today on this thing. It's not in a matter of people breaking the promises. I know for a fact that there's one gentleman up there that hates this, but feels like it's the best thing to do to keep the city in clover and as far as the revenue is coming from a viable business. So...
Well, I mean, I think everybody hated this from the beginning. That's, that's what was said. And then we've given and given, given, given. But, yeah, I just don't think that they're holding up their end of the deal. I mean, if we're talking about impulse buys, okay, so after ten o'clock, there's ones open in Compton till like twelve or one. So if we close at ten and it's an impulse buy, they're going to go to Compton.
Yeah, I'll give you...
They're going to go to the illegal one in another city. I know our illegal ones are, are under control now, which is great.
I will give you thirty percent of this has been just frankly foolishness among the operators. And I've scolded them all independently on this over the years. But a lot of this has just been the change of the business climate that nobody expected when we, when we took this up two years ago. I mean, I think that's really the simple explanation for this.
But a lot of them are already operating in dispensaries.
Sure.
They have been, correct?
Correct.
And some of them, a lot of other dispensaries.
But I mean, again, too, I know that Mr. Louis got his, got his permit late and opened fairly quickly.
Right. Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly. I mean, he was open ahead of, yeah, I give him that. I mean, he got his...
And I, I don't want to make too many excuses, but I know that one of our outliers here has had a significant amount of family problems that I won't share. But I mean, that's kept them away for a while. So, but I think, I firmly believe that the four, the core we're working with are going to get their stores open and they're going to be credits to the, as far, well, whether you ever be, agree that a cannabis business is a credit, they're going to run a clean and open business, and I think it'll be okay at the end of the day.
Mr. Mayor?
Before, before, you have a question?
Talk about the liquidated damages we've been receiving.
Yeah, well, I'm going to go into it. But before I do that, Ms. Stover, do you have the information as far as when we give the license to MCBPs? For the licenses?
I don't, I do not have the exact date with me right now, no.
Okay, also going to ask joint forces to respond to the question in terms of the opening. Because I, my understanding is you're the only one who hasn't opened yet.
I don't, look, that's a personal issue. We have to know a little bit.
No, 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 no. Hold on. In terms of what they're planning on doing, when are they?
Okay, okay, that's fair, okay.
I mean, that, that, that needs to be out in the open. That's not personal.
But I mean, have these issues been going on for two years? It's been two years.
No, 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 not, we're not talking about the issues. Talking about when are they going to open?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not asking what the issues are.
I think you want, you want to know that, right?
What, when they're going to open?
Yeah.
Well, they're going to tell us tonight.
They're going to tell us, so...
Oh, yeah. I mean, that, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I just, it just...
So I'm going to invite them to respond to that question because I also want to know, because we heard that Kaliva is going to open next week or this week or next week.
And they were supposed to open August first. So, and I know they've been paying damages since then, right?
Right.
Yes, they have been, they've been paying us.
Okay.
Every month.
Exactly.
From August for Kaliva, and I think joint forces since June, if I recall correctly, they've been paying us every month based on their estimated sales times the tax rate.
Well, as, as they should.
So we're getting the money?
As, as they should.
Yeah.
Because they're not holding their end of the bargain.
Right, okay.
In my eyes, anyway, so, but, okay.
Okay, so let me invite joint forces to respond to the question in terms of, when do you expect to, to open?
Mayor, councilmembers, yes, as we plan on opening December fifth. What a lot of people don't realize is that there's a whole other state process. And that state process, when we were awarded June tenth, we applied June eleventh. It took five months to get that. We just, last week, got our state license that would even allow us the ability to start working. And so we added one last change, which was a double door entrance because we wanted to be able to come through the back. That was kind of a late submittal we did last week. But I think we're going to hear back from the city on any corrections we have, hopefully that week. My door guy says he can get it in within two days. So, you know, it's not as simple as awarding me the licenses to some people and then being able to open up in three weeks. You know, there's a full state process. We've been going through the state process for the cultivation for almost a year now. If you ask BBY Logistics, it took them a year and four months. I haven't heard of anybody that has gone through the state process on cultivation in less than a year. I haven't heard anybody that got their retail license from the state in less than six or seven months.
How about EEL? I think they, they got theirs...
There's been retail we've seen.
Well, the difference is, is that we were not awarded one in the beginning. So we didn't have a temporary license. Where so, anybody that had a temporary license could have got a provisional license. We did not have that. So we had to apply and go for the full annual license. So we had to make sure every single thing was correct.
Okay.
And as far as that, the other things is when we got the retail, it shifted everything. You know, our distribution was running out of that, so now it moved over. So there were some more changes that came along when we got handed that license in June tenth.
Okay. So you're going to open very soon?
Yes, very, very soon.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just remind all the, the MCBP holders that I think your licenses are up for renewal on December sixteenth. Is the hearing date, correct?
Mr. Mayor, yes. Staff has collected renewal applications and currently reviewing them.
Okay.
And we will present them to the City Council at a hearing on December sixteenth.
So let me just remind you, if you haven't opened, I'm, if I were you, I'm going to try my very best. So let me just remind you, if you haven't opened, I'm, if I were you, I'm gonna try my very best. No, you're done. I'm gonna try my very best to open, uh, before the public hearing date. Okay? And, um, as far as the learning, learning process concerned, uh, we're also learning. Uh, as you recall, from, from the very beginning, uh, we took a tour of Kaliva in San Jose. That's what our, part of our learning process. And so we're learning, um, as we go along. And, uh, just speaking for myself, um, had I, had I known about this, um, had I thought about the, uh, liquidated damages from the very beginning, I think we would have been much better off, okay? So, but in hindsight, I'm glad that, uh, I, it's one morning I thought about this and that was, uh, that was implemented. So we are learning also, just like you are. So it's not a perfect system, so we're trying our best also to, again, the bottom line here is, uh, we're gonna try to collect as much as we could for our residents because we want to give the best for our city. Okay? So anyone else would like to speak? Come on up. You're, you're a real gentleman.
I am.
Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay.
Please sign in again, Pete.
Again, on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Peter Inkorn again.
Just for your information, uh, when you speak here, uh, your name is in the minutes of the meeting, so every, every time you speak, please write in your name.
Peter Inkorn, concerned the cannabis issue. A lot of people don't realize, uh, that the illegal cultivation and sales market is so much more lucrative to those people than it is people who actually operate legally. I've said two years ago that I'm for medical marijuana, you know, for medical reasons, if it works. But, um, we had some people in our neighborhood growing marijuana and I'm sure they're selling it. And my problem is, is there's great big meat bones thrown in our backyard. And I asked the guy who was growing the stuff, did you do that? With the surprised look on his face, no, I didn't do that. I didn't do it either. Who threw those huge meat bones back? Cuz we have dogs, right? You're not going over our fence. And, uh, it kinda surprised him. I said, look, you know, you have a daughter and wife and you have to be very, very careful. Well, maybe they made money. They moved out and it's gone, which I'm really glad cuz we got a lot of traffic. You know, the porch light went on. We got a lot of traffic. And, um, I'm for the dispensaries or the growers. I don't know, uh, how many are in the city. I, I am wondering, do we have grow facilities here and how many? And do they also have a dispensary? So, um, I know these guys ran into that problem in a great big way. We, we learned just by happen chance, cuz our porch got ran into by a car on Lakeview Boulevard. The fellow sitting right there on the porch looking at the car, their friend is Rex, said, well, we don't wanna open no dispensary here. This is way too expensive. We can operate illegally a lot cheaper. And we just looked down like-
Mr. Inkorn, our issue tonight is the hours of operation opening on Sunday. In terms of cultivation, I can tell you that we have two licenses for cultivation. We have four dispensaries.
How many? Two for cultivation?
Yeah, two for cultivation.
That was one of my questions, yeah.
Yeah, and then four dispensaries.
Okay, till 10 o'clock.
That's the question now, is the hour. What is your testimony regarding the hours of operation? They want to keep open until, until 10, uh, 10:00 PM, Friday to Saturday, and then, uh, Sunday to Thursday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
I think you're missing my point. I'm for what these companies are doing, that they need to stay up a little more to make it lucrative.
So you're, you're in favor of the, the time that they're asking for?
They can't compete with the other guys. There's no way. And, uh, I'm for them opening up longer as long as everything's kept safe.
Okay.
And secure.
Are you, are you okay with Ben, uh, him, they're being open on Sundays?
Yeah, I'm, they have to make, it's like any other business, they have to make, they have to make money. Otherwise, you know, there's no point in having the business. It's, it's, it's pure dollars and cents and operations and what works and what don't work. That's all it is.
Okay.
All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I didn't know how many, how many grow sites there were and how many dispensaries there were.
Uh, two cultivation, four dispensaries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you lose Victor? Where's Victor?
Victor's under the counter over there.
Okay. Anita, you're back.
I'm back.
Please sign in, Anita. The city clerk doesn't forget your name.
Okay. All right. I have to agree with, um, the gentleman here and with the, with the people who have the stores here. If you don't let them operate longer hours, but you expect a revenue, that doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
And 10 o'clock at night, I personally, I'm not involved with the cannabis at all. I don't smoke it. I don't use it. But if you're gonna do it, then do it and give them a fighting chance.
Okay. How about, how about Sunday? Are you okay with Sunday?
I'm okay with Sunday and personally, um, I know there are other places around that are open till 11, cuz I know people that use the stuff. And, um, if it would help them do that, you might wanna consider that in the future. I don't know. But I don't have any, I don't understand what the issue is and why there's such a resistance. Since you have them in the business now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Stewart, in the meantime, Mr. Stewart, uh, can you help staff research in terms of what the state law allows? So at least we are, we're educated, so we know exactly.
Can you sign in again?
Okay.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor, council members, staff.
You're busy, Victor.
Bellflower, uh, fellow Bellflowerians.
Where's Larry?
Uh, he left. He had to go home.
He abandoned you?
Yeah, he abandoned you. Um, you know, this topic brings me back to a, a paper I wrote out in college, um, a while ago now, but, um, I know it was a, a difficult topic. I think that it was a, I mean, like Ms. Brown shared, you know, you kinda, we, we went many different ways. It's a, it's a, in a tou- tough matter, but I think, well, the thing that was just last mentioned was, um, kinda like in, um, our nightlife with restaurants, right? We, we used to have those clothes at 8, 9. I mean, it was really hard to have a nightlife and in order to give the restaurants a chance, we started really revamping that and what it looked like. We now have, um, restaurants that can have alcohol till, you know, midnight to 1:00 and some of them to 2:00. I, I think here is the same case. I'd rather have people buying from a legal dispensary than buying it in the corner. I think that they help monitor that situation. It doesn't seem like, according to the knowledge that was presented tonight or this evening, there's, there's been no, um, criminal activity, at least that's been reported or any of that matter. I, I would echo the thoughts of go, go 9 to 10 or go to whatever is out there as well that allows them to be compatible or, or, um, allows them to compete with the market, um, in the surrounding cities. This is one of the things that we did differently than other surrounding cities and I think we just gotta put, let them do their, their job. And it's their business. They've invested a lot of it, uh, into them. I've, I've seen a few. I haven't gone into any of them, but, uh, I've visited them like from the exterior side of things and they look really nice. And some of the images that you've shown before in other meetings, um, I would just echo that. Just see what times that you can give them, but I, I would at least match 9 to 10, like the city of Long Beach, which is our, our neighboring city. The other thing, for clarification purposes, there was a, a fee that, or some kind of a penalty, right, for those that didn't open? I know, I think you mentioned that a little bit earlier.
No, it's not a penalty. It's liquidated damages.
Got it. All right, liquidity damage.
So basically what it is, is they estimated their sales when they applied, uh, for the permits. They gave us some numbers in terms of their sales data. And based on that, we calculated based, the sales tax, the tax on that.
So, and that's one form we were keeping them accountable.
Right.
Correct?
So if they don't open, it's a pay us.
Absolutely. Okay, good. So in a way, that's no operation, but yeah, we're still receiving the revenue, so. Okay, cool. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Wonderful. All right. Any, any final comments, my colleagues here? Comments?
Would you like to hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Ray.
You wanna make a comment first?
Just a quick, uh, was Carl looking into the, the law or?
We'll look into it tomorrow.
Oh, okay. I just looked, you know, I recognized Mr. Lewis as a-
Yeah, I know, the mayor gives her reaction. We'll look into it tomorrow.
Yeah, but when he said 95%, sure, that was like, oh, you know, okay.
I want, I want 100%.
Yeah, and that's, all right, thank you.
All right. Um, before we go to a motion, I'd, I'd like to just may, state my, my, uh, my feeling on this. Uh, to me, the, um, as, as you recall, to me, the bigger issue is whether it's medical or recreational. And that's, that's, to me, that's the more, more difficult issue to me to, to contemplate with, uh, compared to the time it's open, the days it's open. So I, I kinda liken this to, um, uh, just assume for the moment that we are medical only, just for the moment. We're medical only. I kinda relate this to a pharmacy. Pharmacies are open 24/7, so you can get medication. So if someone needs medication, um, you can buy medication to a pharmacy, whether it's Walmart, um, Walgreens or CBS or whatever it is, anytime during the 24 hours. So to me, it's not a difficult decision to give the, uh, the operators time. Again, the bigger issue to me is recreational versus medical. Since we are already in the, in the recreational business, I have no problem giving them the time that they need, even the days. Because again, my analogy is if you're in a pharmacy, it's open, if you need some medication, you can get it 24/7 because that's something that you need. It's okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
You can lay that. I do, you can make the motion if you want.
Well, if you want. I'll entertain a motion if you, if there's no motion there.
Didn't Ray already make a motion?
He was about to. I interrupted him.
I'll share.
So Ray, do, do what you were doing.
Well, I thought you guys, okay.
Yeah, Raymond can second it if you'd like.
That messes with the clerk. Now, see. Okay, introduce ordinance number 1382. And, uh, amending the Bellflower Municipal Code 14.16.020 regarding the cannabis dispensary hours and waive further reading.
Second.
Uh, motion by council member Dutton, seconded by council member Hamada, uh, for the city council to, uh, uh, adopt ordinance 1382. Local, please.
Council member Dutton?
Aye.
Council member Hamada?
Aye.
Council member Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye.
Okay, uh, council reports. Uh, council member Dutton?
I don't have anything to, Mayor.
Oh, wow. Okay, council member Hamada?
Uh, just a few things, uh-
I know you have some.
I know, good. Been in the same place as you are. You've been, so I'll thin it out and let you-
Okay. Um, but, um, again, last month, I was able to attend the chamber morning mingle and I always enjoy them. They're well attended.
Things are picking up. Business, downtown's looking great. So, uh, just, uh, it's, it's just a pleasure to, to, to be a part of that. And, uh, again, I think I'll let the mayor talk more about the, um, you know, Thompson Pool grand opening. Um, both the mayor and I went to the state of, of the college, Cerritos College. Uh, Dr. Farrow again is doing an awesome job over there and he's, uh, there's a lot of programs coming forth and, uh, we, we, we were in a nice new facility and so, uh, things are moving along there. This, uh, past, uh, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, uh, I always, uh, take advantage of the county hazardous, look at hazardous materials, uh, collection. So, uh, when, whenever that's around town, I take advantage of it. You're able to take, uh, you know, used oil or whatever it may be, paint that usually accumulates and so on. And, uh, maybe I'll let the mayor talk about this Roptimus fashion show and, um, Robin Snow came forward about the rose cremation. Uh, the mayor Protem, uh, and I attended the A-Lands event with the, that's the sheriff's, uh, and, uh, sheriff, Phil Nueva was there. He, uh, spoke to the group and I will leave it as interesting discussion. And, uh, uh, there was also a, a presentation about, uh, look at some initiative that's coming forward and probably for next year's election. You know, keep California safe. So there'll be more to come on that. Uh, and, um, I'll let the mayor or anybody else finish with the wall that heals.
You're leaving a lot to me. Uh, council member Coops.
All right.
Give it to Dan.
I'm gonna let, leave the, uh, our runner-up status with the business friendly. I'll let you do that one.
Oh, the losers. Let everybody know we're losers.
I don't wanna take any of your thunder, so I'll leave that to you. But I will have, I'm gonna read an obituary here. It was mentioned earlier by Robin Snow that Jean Engelbach had passed away. And so I'd like to, uh, submit that we, uh, adjourn our meeting tonight in memory of Jean Engelbach. Born in 1947, Jean Engelbach was raised with five siblings in Oaklawn, Illinois. She met her husband Bruce at the University of Illinois. They married 1967 and immediately started their drive to Los Angeles where Bruce was ordered to work by the Air Force. Jean volunteered for many community groups. She was proud to live in Bellflower and proud to be able to help. She was a member of the Women's Club of Bellflower, the PEO and Friends of the Library. She was a lifelong learner, receiving a BA and MBA and a master in library science. Jean loved being a children's librarian and helping others. Jean loved all things Disney and for years she and Bruce had annual passes and they would go off into Disneyland. They would ride all the attractions, stroll the park, but honestly, meeting and helping people from all over the world to enjoy the park mu- brought her a lot of satisfaction. Jean cared for her husband through two organ transplants and her daughter through a cancer recovery. She burnt, Jean beat cervical cancer only to be struck down again in 2013 when she was diagnosed with multiple melanoma. Her strength and determination carried her throughout bone marrow transplant and years of chemotherapy. She lost her battle with cancer on November 8th, 2019. Jean is survived by her husband Bruce, daughter Jennifer Kim and her husband Andrew, son Jonathan Engelbach and his wife Florencia, daughter Veronica Hudson, son Donovan Lively and his wife Rochelle. Grandchildren Jessica, Melissa, Tim, Caitlin, Tyler, Ryan and Tyler. Great grandchildren to Kian and Aubrey. Many nieces and nephews and the adopted family she has surrounded herself with. It was, services haven't been determined yet, although I've heard that it'll be sometime next week at the Women's Club. She was very, very active in the Women's Club and that was near and dear to her heart. Didn't mention here that she was also a real estate agent. I know I bought property from Jean Engelbach back in the 90s and, uh, so she was a lady, very, very talented lady and very, very giving of her time and her talent to the city of Bellflower and she's gonna be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, council member Coops. Um, I just want to kind of report a few things, uh, to you. Uh, on October 29th, we inaugurated the, uh, we reopened the, uh, Bellflower Aquatic Center with city council and staff and it was a great, um, uh, grand reopening. And I was told that, um, uh, it passed inspection today and it's gonna be open very, very soon. Uh, council member Hamada and myself attended the state of the college report by, uh, by the superintendent. It was a great update on what's going on with the Cerritos College. Also, council member Hamada and myself, uh, attended the grand opening of Super Bionikos. Uh, we miss you, council member Dutton. Uh, it's a new site on Bellflower Boulevard. Also, um, council member Coops and Hamada attend, and I attended the Roptimus Fashion Show. It was a great event. I encourage, uh, more of the, um, our volunteers to, um, give more time or more money for a good cause. Also, I, uh, attended a, um, a show of the Bellflower Symphony. It was a spectacular event. My, my, my only regret is there's only about 20, 75 people who came. I, I wish that I am gonna work with the city manager and staff to get this advertised more because they have good talent and only 75 people showed up, so that's, that's not good. Uh, as mentioned earlier, I went to, um, attend the Board of Supervisors meeting where they gave Cita Bellflower $1.5 million for the temporary shelter services. Thanks to supervisor Janice Hahn for her motion, uh, to give us funding. And congratulations again to Robin Snow and Crystal Leva for opening Rose Cremation on Artisia Place. And on last, last Friday, uh, November 8th, uh, we, um, dedicated a plaque commemorating the, the walled hills that visited Cita Bellflower in March of this year. Uh, it was well attended. We invited, the city, uh, the city council invited the sponsors, the veterans and, uh, the volunteers uh, who participated in that event. And finally, personal congratulations to our city staff, uh, Lydia Munoz of the city manager's office. She ran the Big Bear Marathon and qualified for the Boston Marathon, so she did well. I was there to applaud her, uh, at the finish line. So with that, we are adjourning this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM on Monday, November 25th, 2019, in memory of Jean Engelbach. This meeting is- This meeting is now adjourned.